Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council study session held on Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, commencing at 7:06 PM. Council members in attendance are Council Vice President Kritzer, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Fields online, and myself, Council President Forsyth. There are three items on our agenda tonight: Redmond 2050, the economic vitality, park, housing, and centers policies, community health through housing thrive, and council talktime. First item on the agenda is the Redmond 2050 economic vitality, park, housing, and centers policies, and I will hand it over to Director Helen.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, and just reminding us that last week you had a presentation from Parks and Planning staff that introduced the final drafts of four comprehensive plan elements and one functional plan addressing parks, arts, recreation, culture, and conservation, the plan we refer to as the Park Plan. We appreciated the questions and the feedback that you provided last week and captured those in an issues matrix together with staff responses that are included in your pack-up materials at Attachment A, and will be working through that this evening. I'm joined tonight by Ian Lefcourt and Jeff Churchill, and Becky Frye is online. Our goal tonight is to work through the matrix, issues related to project schedule, housing and centers, and environmental review under the State Environmental Policy Act. We are planning on saving the topics related to economic vitality and the Park Plan, Functional Plan, until your September 26th study session. So because these are near final or final drafts, I just wanted to give kind of level set on where we are in this process. We've been at it for a couple of years now. The Planning Commission has done a tremendous amount of work. They have accepted your conceptual feedback. They have worked on many of these elements. By the time you are seeing the elements in the form that they are in now, they really are at a final stage. We would like to see if you have text changes, and what I am proposing is that if there are conversations about changes you would like to make to the text at this point, that we do something similar to what we do in the budget process and ask whether there's a majority of council members that would like to see changes so that we can move through them relatively quickly. These are the first four elements, and we're only going to touch on three of them tonight. You have a lot of work to do, and we have a tight calendar to get all of this work done. So I just wanted to remind everyone where we are in the process and how much left we have to do. So with that, I'm going to turn the, actually, the microphone back to Council President Forsyth to walk us through the matrix, and we can certainly put that up on the screen if that would be helpful.
Is someone able to screen share that? Did anyone have any questions or comments on the staff responses to their questions or anyone else's questions within the matrix?
And just for reference on the order, we have placed them in the order that we talked about, the first schedule and through the various different topics, and we can just stop when we move through those topics, saving the economic vitality and park Functional Plan for next time.
Any questions, comments? Anyone want to kick us off here? Council Vice President Kritzer.
Well, actually, I will see if Councilmember Stewart has a question on this. Obviously, it was her question, so, but I had a follow-up question on this first one. So, good, good value. All right, great. Well, so, appreciate the answer on this around delaying the Overlake updates. I guess the question that still occurred to me that I wanted to check in on was, will delay on doing this Overlake work ultimately mean that some developments will not proceed until we do this work? That might otherwise happen, because I think there was kind of a note at the end of this answer about that. Or is it more that we would miss out on directing the way that that growth happens? That perhaps there'll be projects, but we won't for a longer period of time be able to have the opportunity to make the changes to what develops in that area? Oh, okay. Maybe it's both. So, curious to hear.
We're going to have Becky respond to that, and I might add some editorial comment at the end.
Yeah, I would say a little bit of both. I think that's true. There are a couple of developments that we have been in conversations with for the last couple of years and a couple that have come up. Even just today, we had another conversation with somebody who's looking at something in Overlake. I think it's honest to admit that there are folks who are waiting for it, and there are folks who are confused about the change and just want more time to think about it. So there's a little bit of both sides. So there's pros and cons to whatever decision we choose to make.
Okay, thanks. And I will say that I have heard from other folks in the community that it might make sense to have a little bit more time to be able to think about these and work on them. I think it's compelling to think about making the changes altogether for adoption, so not saying that we shouldn't do that. I just thought it'd be good to clarify what's the missed opportunity to change from our original schedule that you all thought was important.
I'd say most of the, also, just the most of the developers that I've spoken to that have, you know, staff is speaking to a lot of different people. I have pretty continuous conversations with developers in Overlake particularly, but in other areas who have properties, have ideas for how they'd like to develop them, and I am tending to hear more about the individuals who would like to almost vest to the current code to have some stability and certainty and predictability. There are fewer that are waiting for the next ones, and those few are tending to be standing off a little bit just because of the economic headwinds that we're seeing with respect to interest rates. I mean, they would like to get projects going, but they're also actively engaged in this process, and they likely are going to be kind of in the next round of economic development cycle.
Thank you. And last thought on this is that I do think, given that the majority of our growth is going to go in this area, that it makes sense for us to get the, to get the policies, both the vision as well as the corresponding regulations, right on this area. That way, we get the intended outcome, since we need the growth there, really, to be able to meet our growth targets.
Agreed.
Thank you. Anyone else on this first item? I will just add that I appreciate the ability to take more time to look at the Overlake area as well. I think this is definitely an area that we're all very passionate about because we have such an opportunity here, so the extended time for us to get this in the best shape we can, I definitely also appreciate. All right, so scrolling on down. We have the Planning Commissioner's thoughts on the change and approach of what the impacts are. I think we pretty much discovered that. Housing Action Plan element. Staff response. Any questions on this one? Questions, comments? Includes the multifamily property tax exemption, inclusionary zoning. Councilmember Stewart.
Sure, I'll speak to this item, and thank you so much for the entire memo that got wedged in here, but it was helpful particularly toward, toward the end, and that's maybe that last paragraph that I think is the most helpful for us to think about at the moment here. Both of those reports, the one on the racialized impacts of middle housing and where we're going on that, and then the analysis of both our inclusionary zoning and MFT programs and what we could possibly do there. I am so glad that we put the 12-year program pilot in place, especially after seeing that. So it's a ton of information, and now we're operating at multiple levels, which I think gets to the question that Councilmember Fields had added to the matrix. And this, this stage we're at is at such a high level. I feel like we're going to come back to this, these sets of analysis. So I just really appreciated the memo that was in here to tie it all together. There's not really much more to say at the time. They were fascinating, and I'm so grateful that the city was able to have those, those two projects completed.
Hi, Ian Lefcourt, Senior Planner. Thank you for that feedback. Staff wanted to emphasize a few components, and the first is that the happy report that was delivered to council does include some of the data from the initial model. And as we recall, the financial feasibility model has been undergoing iterative review with our consultant, with our development stakeholders, and we think it's in a pretty good place. We shared it out for Development Stakeholder Review a couple weeks ago, and the feedback we received is all about kind of the conclusions or policy about it. It seems like the model itself is, it's solid. There's no leaky spots in the model itself. The development stakeholders did emphasize that, as Director Helen mentioned, the economic conditions are really tough right now, and so they provided a few parameters of what they think might be feasible and might be not in the immediate future. And they also emphasized that they are happy to have continued conversations about the different approaches we can have to try and realize some of those deeper AMIs. And the element in front of us that we reviewed is at the policy level, and the actual MFT and IZ changes will come at a regulatory level in the future.
And that much was clear from your memo, so thank you so much on that. I do appreciate it.
And I would just like to note, for the people who are watching the conversation and may not have the matrix to see in front of them, that the happy grant that we were referring to is the Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant.
Thank you. One question I had on, on the note you just spoke of, of interest rates and the changing outlook. We've done a lot of this work leading up to this moment with a completely different economic outlook. So how is the, all of the current pressures, how are those being, how are we adapting? How are we being nimble within the code so that if, in, say, five years, things go back to the how they, how we knew them before in that previous life? How is the code adapted to be flexible in that space?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I think there's kind of two pieces to it. And the first is, in the element itself, the policy direction is one of make sure all the tools in the toolbox are at council's disposal. So just from a opportunity, the policies ensure that we will have that. From the actual regulatory changes, one of the nice things about the model from our consultants is that not only does it look at the parameters of, you know, the inclusionary zoning or the multifamily property tax exemption program, but we can also have a lot of fun with other variables: interest rates, tenant improvement, costs, hard costs, construction time. All of those components can be examined as one tool that feeds into how staff will create these regulatory development proposals to see that we can most optimize the housing outcomes our community wants to see.
I think, just as an add-on to that as well, codes need to be responsive to conditions, but they also can't be moving all the time. So while we have this great tool at our disposal to help us understand the effectiveness of this, of our proposed regulations in this current moment, it is likely that we will have to incorporate either thresholds for when we should revisit regulations and recalibrate incentives, for instance, or have a kind of frequency of review that helps us take into account economic changes over time, because you wouldn't want to return to the economic situation that we had two years ago after, or I'm saying this backwards, I'm sorry. You wouldn't want to have to, you wouldn't want to keep the regulations in place that are built on an economic circumstance that we have today and then not have those adapt if the economic circumstances change drastically. But we have to balance that with predictability as well.
Right. Thank you. Council Vice President Kritzer.
I found it interesting in the analysis they did of being able to look also at neighboring jurisdictions and other places that have been able to look at these policies. And I'm just curious to know from you all, you know, from before you commissioned this, this analysis to after, if there were any kind of new tools or takeaways in terms of learnings from thinking about how other jurisdictions are approaching this, or just even what you learned from the analysis that you might not have expected, or things that we're adding into our toolkit?
Absolutely. I think the member jurisdictions who participated provided us a bunch of useful, actionable feedback, not only in terms of our outcomes, but our process. So that includes things that are as granular as, you know, like actual little tweaks to the model, to things like provisions that we want to have in our binding affordable housing documents. And the, the main takeaway I had is that there's so many variables that cross jurisdiction collaboration and just getting the lived experiences of our neighbors can help avoid pitfalls before we cross them. And because the economic conditions are similar but still different, you can kind of understand the different conversations that have occurred and try and apply that to the different sub-areas of Redmond. Obviously, our Overlake neighborhood is a lot more similar to Bellevue, and our downtown, for a variety of reasons, including our drinking water, has different development conditions. So you can kind of have different conversations with different collaborators and say, okay, what would work best for our community in this situation?
Councilmember Fields.
Thank you, Council President. You guys can hear me okay, right?
Yes.
So I think Director Helen sort of touched on the question. When I first put my hand up, she hadn't provided that input at that point, but I'm, I'm a little bit lost, I will say, on sort of the, the dynamics, I guess is the best word I can come up with, between what we lead as a jurisdiction, as a city, and what we try to lay out for the community, and then our reaction to what the developers and the people who build our community are going through. So this, this discussion about the macroeconomics and even the microeconomics impacting, creating a more cautious, there are so many things in play right now, including climate refugees that are, you know, that are, we're building up a pretty big likelihood that, at least for some period of time, we might, this area may be seen as a very desirable place to move away from 120-degree heat, or hurricanes, or floods, or whatever. So, you know, I'm, I'm a little bit lost on why the city had made some slowdown in what we want to do in creating our vision and creating our response to the future based on our reaction to what our development community is going through. And I think you touched on that, Director Helen, a little, of, you know, how to, how to do that or how to make that happen. But if you could provide some more input for me, I would be immensely grateful.
Sure, of course. And I, one thing I don't think, staff and I want to leave you with the impression tonight is that we are listening to one segment of the community of stakeholders that we have involved in this process. So we have been, in the past, people have been critical about the city's transparency or the lack thereof about the work that we are doing. We are being incredibly transparent with the work that we are doing. We are engaging stakeholders. We are asking them to participate where they are interested. Obviously, in the model that addresses MFT and inclusionary zoning, that has a particular interest to developers, and they are giving us their insight, but they are not the ones ultimately who will adopt the regulations. They are telling us how they believe it will affect housing and the delivery of housing, and we need housing supply. So our hope is that we balance both our objectives and our values for the city of Redmond, and at the same time, ensure that we don't break the development cycle, because the development cycle is what delivers on those public benefits and amenities that we want to see in our community. So we're trying to find a balance, and that balance involves also engaging stakeholders like Futurewise that have a tremendous amount of expertise in the development and evaluation of pro formas, and getting their take on what they think will work and what won't work, and getting ideas about how we can strike an appropriate balance to achieve the environmental goals that you've set, the, the transportation safety goals, and livability goals, and growth goals that the city has to accommodate.
And I completely appreciate your response. I think that's what I was hoping I would hear. I think it's really important that we create that intimacy with our stakeholders, but also the distance, because at the end of the day, we are the ones who are deciding, in general, how, how we are all going to meet as much of these common goals and disparate goals as we can. So I appreciate your words about the, the balance of stakeholders. I really do. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any more questions? I think we can move down to the next couple items. Council Vice President Kritzer.
I think the next two items are mine. I appreciated the answers on these ones and, and some of the highlights that you shared, especially in terms of some of the, the outcomes that we hope to produce. So that was really helpful, to highlight just some of the things out of this, this big, what, 900-page document, so, thank you. I'm good to close both of them out, and look forward to discussing the economic vitality element, getting to talk a little bit more about that at the next session. Happy to hold the questions on that till then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others on those two? Not seeing anyone. Move down to the centers topic. So this one was mine, as far as flexibility, and I understand the different building codes and the requirements, but I did appreciate the response about moving away from specific use regulations. I just, I know how important it is to get all of this stuff right and making sure that we are thinking well into the future as far as, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty right now economically. There's a lot of uncertainty right now with work from home, so, so just having some of this future thinking as part of our, our thought process moving forward was, is, I see as pretty critical to, to this whole process. So I appreciate that response and would challenge us to be a bit more forward-thinking as well. I know that it's a really hard conversation as far as, you know, office buildings tend to have lots of windows, and you would have to have very centralized amenities and that sort of thing, so it's a very big topic, but I do know that, that things are uncertain and things are changing, so as much flexibility and use as we can have in that code, I definitely appreciate that being considered. Any others on that one? Moving right along. So this one was also me for the passive house, and I think this, this definitely helped, helped me to find where it was, and I do apologize if this was in there and I missed it, so I appreciate that. For me, though, it was more of an instance in how this reflects back to our Design Review Board standards, because for passive house, a lot of, a lot of it really relies on not having that building undulation. So I don't quite know if this actually will pacify getting around that Design Review Board element, and if you could speak to that, that would be helpful for me.
I do know that Kim and I have talked about this at least once before, and I think that as we start to look at the citywide design guideline updates that are underway right now, we can reevaluate that, but yes, that is something that did come up. I don't think we have a solution at this point from a, an end result, but it is something that we're aware of and we're looking at as we're updating the code.
This, I'd also just like to add on to that. Becky's right. We will have to ensure that we align substantive code objectives with any of our policies and procedures, and those include our board and commission policies and procedures. This question specifically also has an intersection with some of the legislative changes that got made during the last session, where one of the requirements is that every Design Review Board standard be objectively measurable as opposed to subjective, so that will potentially narrow the scope of, of Design Review Board influence. We've also talked about over time whether the scope of review authority of the Design Review Board should be appropriately narrowed to help the supply of housing come online faster. And there are some types of developments, like the five-over-one, five-over-two development, that by its nature has a little bit less architectural flexibility. We can require quality materials, but because of just the way those structures are, are built, they have less ability to articulate in a way that actually is buildable and actually optimizes on the amount of space for people. So it's going to be important for us to look at things like that as well, and it, it is likely that passive house will be more accommodated in the future under those new guidelines and kind of structure for Design Review Board.
Are we looking at all at a, at a situation where we would allow exception for passive house because it meets such high sustainability goals? I mean, that's, that's kind of my end.
I mean, I also, I agree that that's a good objective. I think it might be prudent for us to think about whether the Design Review Board should be involved in some, there should be a higher threshold for Design Review Board involvement in residential projects, and potentially five-over-one and five-over-two projects should just be exempt to speed the delivery of housing and make our rules more specific.
Interesting. I don't know that I would go that far.
It's, it'll be a place that we'll have a conversation.
Right. So we're still going to circle back on, on this element of it, and, okay, so conversation doesn't end there. Got it. Any other on?
Right now, right now, we're just looking at the policies, but the code work on design standards are, are underway, so you will see them coming forward.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else on that topic? Okay. Moving right along. This one was also my question. I definitely appreciate the suggested potential clarity revision. I think that makes a lot of sense, so I'm good with that, if, if others are as well.
Can you clarify which one you're discussing?
So the UC10, which stated about building materials, the suggested edit is to, for potential, for clarity, is to develop in centers, or development centers should allow for innovation, innovative solutions to urban design and affordability priorities while maintaining high design, high-quality design and durable, sustainable material features. The way the original one was written had me questioning the durability of the materials in general.
By flipping the order, I think it emphasizes the fact that we still need, no matter what, those high-quality, durable, sustainable materials. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's a fairly simple edit, but I think it does provide some clarity.
Thank you. I appreciate that edit very much. Council Vice President Kritzer.
I'm fine with this edit. I had a follow-up, kind of similar, comment on one area that talked about kind of some similar language that I just wanted to highlight and, and ask whether you had thought about this. On page 509, it states that Overlake will continue to develop with a high-quality urban character, and I know we had been trying to take out overall neighborhood character from our language. I don't know if that was one that was left in there or whether we use it, use it in that context, what that means. I was kind of curious to know, and I think this talks about urban design and urban character, what to you all that means, what we mean by, by that, I think would be helpful to know. And potentially, we might want to say urban design or something like that, just if we're going to make the attempt to take that word out.
Right. I think our bigger, um, exact... Right. I think our bigger exaction was to remove references to neighborhood character. But I think your suggestion with respect to urban design versus urban character is probably one for us to consider.
And how, and how do you think when we actually put those words in as the goal of what we envision, is it in terms of the density of buildings or the ways that people get around? What is, do we have, and I may have missed it in the many pages, kind of that definition of what we mean of an urban character?
I think it is somewhat context-sensitive to kind of what's around us in the paragraph. When we asked questions like that of the community earlier, one of the things that really surprised me is we asked people to identify kind of what was most important to them in terms of what makes, what makes character, what makes good design. And the things that were at the top were not the things on the building. They were the things but from the back of the sidewalk to the center of the street. So, it's all that public realm. So, when, so I think one answer is when the, when community members think about high-quality urban character, they're thinking about our streets, our sidewalks, the street trees, the cafe seating, the lighting. They're also thinking about the building architecture. But above, above that on the list are all those other things, public realm.
Yeah, the building up against the street instead of pushed back. Yeah. So, the Planning Commission actually had a really interesting series of conversations about the word character versus design and should we just exact it completely. And they felt that it was important to keep it there when we're talking about those bigger things that aren't necessarily coming down to a specific element of a building. And so, they did choose to leave it in here in a couple of different places, but they tried to, when it came down to the actual policy language, to be more specific. So, that was, that Overlake shall continue to develop, language that you just mentioned is actually the lead-in text to OV-11, which is specific, maintain design standards that create yada, yada, yada. So, I think it, that was the goal from the Planning Commission's perspective. And so, the more specific pieces under the actual policy, site and building designs, building and associated landscaping. And it actually goes out and spells out those things like the energy-efficient, water-efficient, low-carbon green building. So, you'll see the character more in the text, but not necessarily as much in the policy language itself, if that's helpful.
Thank you. I do appreciate that. I would say the only thing that jumped out to me, especially looking at that, that Overlake section that where they kind of enumerate some of these pieces, the park piece of it, that I don't think it mentioned tree canopy. I might, I might have missed that. But I do think that part of, hopefully, that urban vision also includes having trees in that green space. There's definitely mention about parks and some other pieces, but it would just be something that before we finalize this, I'd love for us to make sure we hone in on, just to have that as part, because I think you're right, there's a lot of details there. But, and sometimes when we say urban, you envision an area that is filled with cement. But what does urban mean in Redmond? I think it should also be very green. And how we get there, I think we only get there if we put that into our vision, which, which there's definitely some pieces in there. But I guess just reading through it, I still wasn't fully envisioning that. So, I wanted to just highlight that as one piece that we might consider as we hone that.
Appreciate you flagging that. I also want to, this is kind of a plug for next month's Rev. 2050 Staff Report and Study Session. So, you'll see the first set of policies on community design, which you haven't seen yet. And the way that it's going to fit together is there'll be, it's a community design element that'll have some general policies. It'll have a section on centers. It'll have a section on corridors. It'll have a section on design standards. It'll have a section on historic preservation. And we've, we've talked about all of that kind of here and there over the last couple of years, but we haven't seen it all together in one place. We'll start to see that next month. So, I think that's another, that's a really great place where we can look to be very descriptive about what we mean by community design.
We do have trees mentioned in many different policy statements. And I do think we have tree management, I think, is in there as well. But yeah, that will also be a part of some other things that are moving forward, as Justin mentioned on design.
And what I'm hearing from the conversation is the word character could potentially be swapped with experience and design experience. Something from my design background is you talk about the design experience and experiencing the amenities in the space. And I think it's, it could potentially be interchangeable. Something to consider. Okay.
Thank you for that.
Moving along to environmental review. This one was also mine about the public comment we had received on allotment numbers for jobs and housing and growth. I did have some follow-up questions on this one. I know that initially, the Government Affairs Committee had asked for a higher number of job placement in the downtown area. And I know we definitely pushed that number higher. I think for me, my concern is still, I don't want to see us creating work zones and residential zones. And I want to make sure that we have vibrant communities all times of day so that we can maintain our small businesses in the downtown area, that people aren't just sleeping downtown and going to Overlake to work. So, I'm, I still have a question mark on the balance of the number of jobs that are going to come downtown and the number of jobs that are going to be placed in Overlake. So, if you could provide me some more insight on the Overlake number, I know there's a higher number of acreage in Overlake. What percentage of that, if you can say, you know, the Microsoft amount of that land is very high. So, what percentage of that is non-Microsoft that we're looking at?
An acreage standpoint, I think about 55% of the center was owned by Microsoft, if I remember right, from whenever we ran the numbers about a year ago. From an allocation of jobs, we didn't break it out that way. But I can go back into the numbers and try to pull that out. We can come back to you with some additional information on that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I'm still trying to figure out if, for me, if that's the same, the right balance. And I feel like we could probably get more jobs in the downtown area. And I'm interested to see what are the, what are the factors that we used to decide the numbers? Just a little more detail on that one would be helpful for me.
The other thing I want to stress is that especially in downtown and to a similar degree, I think in Marymore Village, it's difficult to forecast what percentage of growth will be jobs versus housing.
Right.
Especially with changes that we will evaluate in downtown to put residential, multifamily and non-residential uses on more or less an even playing field. Today, there is not an FAR cap for multifamily, but there is for office. So, if we change that, what will happen? We don't really know because we haven't had that situation since, for at least 25 years. So, we've made estimates on how that growth will occur based on, in part, past patterns, but also being able to meet our growth targets. But it is especially in downtown more challenging because what a property owner can do with property is pretty wide-open. And it will probably involve much more kind of what does the market want to build than how many jobs do we want to bring downtown?
And I guess my response would be, is it to challenge, is it time that we look at those FAR?
That's what I mean. So, yes, definitely.
Yeah. Great. Same page.
And the other thing is to Jeff's point, we are leveling the playing field between those uses, which has been something that, for instance, One Redmond Government Affairs has specifically pinpointed. And the things that make office lucrative and desirable is oftentimes parking. And we're trying not to pull parking into our, down, into our most urban areas because the introduction of lots of cars in a place that people want to be livable can be at intention. The other piece is that because of the high groundwater table, to the extent, remember, the temporary construction dewatering is, all of that parking would have to be above ground.
Right.
So, the parking above ground actually also has a compromising effect on livability. And to date, the 17-story buildings hasn't been something people want to see in the downtown.
Right. And I guess I would challenge to say that the parking situation would be mitigated by the fact that we will have light rail. And I, I kind of, in my head, I think we have it a bit backwards as far as we allow so much parking for businesses and yet restrict more parking for residences where we know that residential folks are going to want to have their cars so they can get out and they can enjoy our amazing environment. And I think that having parking more readily available for office buildings is just, is kind of the backwards way to go about it in my mind. And I think that's kind of what you're saying is we're trying to restrict that and limit that. So, I would challenge our developer community to start encouraging and thinking about public transportation as well.
And that's basically what I think the outcome, the code outcomes are going to create.
Yeah.
This trade-off of if you want to provide office downtown, that's fine. You just can't necessarily do it.
With parking.
In the way that you have historically.
Right.
With the amount of parking that there is a belief that you need.
Right. Yeah. Mayor Bernie?
Thanks. I love this conference, excuse me, love this conversation because what I've been, we've been trying to do is allow a level of flexibility between, you know, what can you build, say, in the downtown, houses or homes versus office and what that looks like. And so, I appreciate your, you know, kind of thinking a little differently about it because I think it adds to that idea of like what flexibility, because we really don't know what people will want to build. We just know what our target numbers are and kind of what that looks like. So, thinking more broadly, I think, is exciting to see what we can come up with. Thanks.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, the conversation's kind of moved a little bit, but I'll just chime in and maybe take us back a step or two. So, sorry about that. But the other thing in thinking about Overlake, particularly as one of our centers, is yes, a large portion of it is owned by one employer who helped build our city. And then there is also an incredible amount of other commercial land that we are going to prioritize for housing. That's what, that's what this comp plan is going to produce for us because that's what we need. And that's what our project, our preferred growth alternative is going to lend itself toward in some part. When we talk about some of the other things, like the trees, for instance, my mind, as someone who lives in that neighborhood, is we'll do the best we can, but the tension is so real. There, this is always going to be the center that has less park space. This is always going to be the center that has less trees. This is always, it's just where we're headed there. So, when a piece of land from a private owner, a corporation currently, becomes available, we're going to either want it for, we're probably going to want, you know, it to be redeveloped to produce housing. But boy, golly, will they ever, you know, will we ever see a donation for a park? Will we ever see more trees back in that neighborhood? We won't. And that, in my mind, is just, it's just important to understand the tensions because I think part of what your conversation's bringing up, Councilmember Forsyth, is we're not going to have it all, but we're building this awesome plan that's going to get us as far as we can on most of our hopes and dreams. And we're turning the road that way. So, in the sense that tonight's conversation is about, are we going in the right direction on our centers? Are we going in the right direction on our housing? I think you all deserve a round of applause because of all the work that has been going on over the last couple of years. We absolutely are. And we, we can have big hopes and big dreams for getting pretty far on a lot of these goals. But we can't have everything in every single neighborhood. And we have choices to make along the way.
Council Vice President Kritzer.
First of all, just respond to that. I mean, I totally agree that we have to recognize that we can't have it all. Although, I would say that part of setting our vision for any of our neighborhoods to say, you know, what are some of the basic amenities we want anyone in Redmond to have? And I doubt I have to tell Councilmember Stewart this, and she does live there. But, you know, for example, on the trees and parks is, yes, it may be that it will be very difficult for us to have the same level as we have in other neighborhoods. But if we want to be able to see some tree canopy and we want to see the opportunity for development of parks, then putting it into our vision for wanting to have those amenities in those neighborhoods, and that's what we do at the comp plan level, I think, is really important. Because otherwise, if we don't even put it in there, then it kind of lends itself to developing further in, in a way that may not incorporate those things that it would kind of naturally not lean towards. So, I think it's helpful for us as a, if those are reach goals for us to articulate and say, these are the things that we want to try to figure out creative ways to make happen. One question I had about the previous conversation on, on the downtown piece was that I saw that Christina Hudson had submitted some additional language. And I wasn't sure if that addresses some of this or at least gives us kind of that policy-level ability to then go back and look at just overall the development of commercial in downtown. Can you speak a little bit to that additional language that was considered?
I don't have it in front of me right now. And I don't know if anybody does. I would have to go, I would have to go look it up first. But we certainly can.
Well, and we were going to speak to the economic vitality, economic vitality next week.
Right.
And actually, Christina Hudson's letter, I read it earlier today, but again, but I think it was tying economic vitality to livability. If memory serves me correctly, we can speak to that more next week.
See that question for next week.
Okay.
And I think if, if I might, I think we've discussed the environmental review growth targets and growth allocations that were raised both by Council President Forsyth and by Councilmember Carson. I can reach out to Councilmember Carson, too, and ask if that's been adequately addressed. But I am mindful of the other topic that you have this evening. I think there were only two general questions after that, if you'd like to.
Sure.
Focus on those.
So, moving on to the park plan question.
Those are for next.
Is that what you were talking about? No. Oh.
The general is at the bottom of page 12.
All right.
It's okay.
Just.
There we go.
There it is. So, Councilmember Fields, this was your question. Interested in mid-level information to supplement the high-level and detailed information. I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments on the response.
So, I didn't raise my hand, but.
Go ahead.
Well, I was listening carefully to the last 20 minutes of conversation. And I do think it was really important that we, that we talked about definitions and we talked about, you know, what people believe. I've actually had been corrected, I don't know how many times over the past six years, when I say design standards, that's what I meant, is what the general population means, is how are our streets laid out? How are the sidewalks laid out? How, how does it all relate to one another as opposed to the architecture? And appreciated that part of the conversation. What I think I'm trying to get at here in this question is, words are great. They do a lot, far. But I'm, like, I know we're going to talk about the parks later, but when I talked about the heat sinks and, and some of the things that we need to do to create a safer community that won't have those heat spots, I'm not talking about mitigating or recommending more plants. I'm talking about a very complete design and also beyond design, a set of regulations. So, and maybe Director Helen can help me with this. And I know she's done this in the past where we had these certain documents that send us directional. Then we have another layer of documents that will start a strategy or the, or the rules around that. I'm concerned, when I read this language, and I'm going to leverage off something Director Helen or somebody said earlier, that we're now more aware. Helen or somebody said earlier, that we're now more aware of these things, and I would argue, we were aware of these things 10 years ago, and we built in a way that didn't really pay attention to livability and didn't pay attention to sort of the safety aspect. And now we, now we are talking about it and focused on it. So, here's, here's my question ultimately. When I read these words, I'm going, okay, you know, they're nice words, but do they actually have sort of significance in the direction that they establish? Or can we have a better understanding of how we can embed that vision that we've all talked about in the, these documents? And that's, that's really what I'm getting at when I talk about identifying impacts of policy changes. Words don't mean a whole lot to me necessarily. They might mean something and I can actually understand what the, what they set in motion.
Sure. So, the, thank you for that question. The policies are intended to be at a high level. You and I have discussed this in the past, and I know that the, actually, the way that staff are developing some of the regulatory changes may address some of the concerns that you're observing because the, the regulations themselves will talk about the intention and the outcomes that are the targets of those regulations. And so, by including that intention embedded within regulatory sections, it helps staff understand the why behind the regulations as well as the public and developers, and also helps manage deviations, if there are deviations from specific requirements, so that you go back to the intention of the section. The, ultimately, the policies, you, you will need to, to adopt policies, you may not have all the specifics of the regulations, but you will have many of them. And so, that will help understand kind of the direction that the policy is going, to have all of those policies and regulations together for your consideration.
Right. And I, and I appreciate that very much. I think my concern is, to the extent that we can really understand and firm up the intent of our policies and the direction, because we're not all going to be here. All of us individually are not all going to be here in two years. Some of us will be here, some of us won't be. So, how do we create that legacy of intent so that the future decision-makers can at least understand? So, I think you've answered the question, I appreciate it. There, I'm just saying, therein lies my concern. I'm fine with these words, I'm fine with the answer and the response, but I did want to pontificate about it for a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on these last two items? Or Councilmember Stewart?
I just have a point of information that the packet from last week is actually offline. I tried two browsers, so if we could have that revisited.
I noticed that too when I went to look for it. You actually can find it if you go to the Agenda Materials from September 5th. I was able to get to it, but sometimes that's a Legistar kink, that when you move those items forward, you lose the past one. But we will endeavor to put the, all the packet materials.
There was a shout out of a page number, and I tried to go to the page.
Yeah.
And then, I guess, another point of information, to be clear, because I actually thought I had it backwards, I thought today we needed to focus on the park plan, so.
I'm.
Oh, okay. So, can we talk about the agenda for our next study session?
Yes.
Apologies for that. Apologies for that. We did ask you to make sure that you got your park issues out on the table. Staff availability led us to put that on September 26th, but we do appreciate having all those issues on the table so we can address them, so apologies. But next week, we are intending, next week, next study session, we're intending to address everything that's left here, so economic vitality and parks on 26th.
Got it.
And we tried to get the park plan out to you as well, well in advance of that, because we know that is a dense document.
Can I add two items for that study session?
Absolutely.
So, on Park 2.2B, we have the, it's a safety topic, and I would love to see us potentially add delineation for separated wider trails for separated walk and bike access, just, just as a safety element, having a wider trail and differentiated zones for use would be a big safety boon, in my opinion. And then, on the regional pools, Chapter 5, and it's either page 149 or 177, it talks about how there are no, currently no plans for Kirkland or Bellevue looking at those measures, and there is a Kirkland pool measure going to levy this fall. Council Vice President Kritzer.
Before we close out our discussion on the housing element, I did want to just express my appreciation to the staff for just so much that is in this document that I think reflects a lot of the feedback that we've given you over the past now several years we've been discussing this. In particular, just wanted to say, I really love the pieces around housing affordability and housing choices that's in there. I really love the social justice and equity goals pieces, and also the, the section that talks about housing and the environment, and I feel like that really reflected some of the feedback that we had given you of saying, we'd like to find a way to be able to kind of have both things, even if we recognize that, you know, it's challenging. So, just thank you for, for doing that, and, you know, I think we're moving in a good direction overall on these.
Councilmember Fields?
Krista just reminded me of something I want to say. We can have it all, and we should attempt to have it all. So, I hope that we don't get single-minded in some locations because we believe that we have to fulfill some one-dimensional aspect of our need. I think we can have livability, we can have housing, we can have balance in our transportation system between people, where they live and where they work. I think we should start with the premise that we're not in a lack of resources, we're in plentiful resources, and we should try to meet that. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else on this topic or items for the next study session we'll have on 2050? All right. Seeing none, have we thoroughly covered everything in your minds?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the feedback.
Moving on, we are now on to our next item, which is the Community Health Through Thrive. Fire Chief Shepherd will introduce the item as we switch guest speakers here.
Do you want to take five?
I think that is an excellent idea, let's take a five-minute recess. We will return, let's call it an even eight-ten.
Thank you. We will continue forward with our Community Health Through Thrive presentation.
All right, well, great. Well, good evening, Council. I'm Fire Chief Adrian Shepherd. It's my pleasure to be before you this evening to talk about our community health through Thrive. As we get started, I just wanted to say that we have a, we have our team members here this evening. They're all specially selected and have a special skill set in each individual area. And I think they'll be able to provide good context to you regarding the program. Next slide, please. All right, so as we look at this slide, we can see that there are key areas in which we operate. Homelessness response, Human Service Program, Mental Health Programs, and the Mobile Integrated Health. And then rounding it out is the Community Court there. Next slide.
Your microphone's not on.
Sorry, thank you. Today's discussion really, we wanted, based on the conversations we had last week, is really come back and answer the why, provide understanding of the initial priorities of, the vision of initial priorities of stronger community health foundation. Through data that we've collected over the last two years and even beyond, but we'll look at the last two years today, we can understand the need for structure and the development of partnerships for greater coordination. We've done a great job with Thrive internally with that, but we're going to talk a little bit about that today and then the expansion to even more partnerships countywide. What we know at this point is if, if we only focus on the immediate need, which has been discussed a lot recently, we allow for a cycle of occurring, a cycle to continue to occur without really coming to resolution for individuals in need. And we lose the opportunity to provide the independence, and this is truly with all clients, no matter what their disposition is and what their needs are within the community. One of the goals that we really put forth was to really look at community health and recognize that there's, there's, there's certainly a mental health aspect, and that's where this started. But what we, we have recognized through the data, which will display, is that this is really a community health issue. We can have greater impacts and still address the, the mental health aspects that are becoming more, more evident within the city. But there's also much more that this team can do with, with proper funding. Funding appropriate staff will strengthen Thrive. It'll break the cycle so that we see currently happening now. On this slide, you'll see, you'll recognize that we've kind of put a, a visual up there because I think it's a super important way to describe this. We know that all interaction starts with notification. That's the 911 call. I put it in green intentionally because that is a starting point. It's a great thing for us and it's a great thing for our community members because it's an awareness. And notifications come through many different avenues. Comes through 911 activations, comes through our partnerships within the community. It comes through partnerships that we have countywide, including Crisis, the Crisis Connections, Downtown, the 988 Response 911, all of those things, homeless insecurities. There's lots of points out there throughout the community, both internally and externally, that, that really support awareness for us. That drives a response and engagement. And response and engagement can look like a lot of things, but as you noticed, the green starts turning to gray at this point. Determination of needs occur, and during that process of determination, needs and immediate plan of resources becomes available. Where we start to lose our momentum and our focus on taking care of these clients is when we get to the next layer, which is really truly providing that wraparound care. And when that failure occurs, whether those individuals get some kind of immediate treatment and connection to resources, potentially it's, it's resource-driven, that's, that's third-party, sometimes it's, and more often than not, it's emergency room access and potentially even jail, we lose those individuals until 12, 24 hours later, they're back in the system, back in that cycle and continuing. What we're asking for from the Council in, in this presentation that we're doing and what we brought forth is to really look at, let's be bigger, let's take, Redmond, take the steps that nobody else is willing to take in advance, and that's build a foundation that really can be, provide wraparound care. Put Redmond Community Care Coordinators in play that, that focus on all aspects of the team, being the Human Services portion, law enforcement, and, and Fire through MIH, and break that cycle and create a support network that will really create, lead us to a place of, of independence for individuals. And we'll share stories. I know Councilmember Fields asked about stories that we have, that, of experiences we've had over the last couple of years, both positive and failures that we've had to overcome. And I, and I think that's an important aspect in this. Really taking, if you could advance once, taking these steps, that's the Redmond Community Care Center. That's the breaking that cycle. That's getting us outside of the, of the, of the cycle of just repetitive behaviors, repetitive actions by us, and get, and creating an environment where we can take that next step outside to support these folks. This next slide reflects, is a reflection of recognition of need based on projected growth for our communities within Redmond. This is looking at 2022 data and looking at projected 2023 data based off of information we have through August of this year and extrapolating that out. There's clearly growth happening. We can see where the volume of the work is in case management, community services, medical care, fall prevention, but all those things above that, housing crisis, this is not a fair representation of housing crisis, and I'll say that right up front because this is MIH data. If we include all of TZA's data, that number's going to grow significantly as well. But I think what's important is to look at, and Liz will speak to this later, and I'm sure TZA will too, is that oftentimes what we see as the crisis in mental health at the, in the moment, is not the issue. The issue is the background, and it really ties back to these categories of area. If we can solve these problems early, we recognize that we can prevent cascading events that gets us to, to mental health. Not in every single case, but oftentimes that's the purpose of the wraparound care is to identify those areas of need. Chief, I see you reaching for your, your mic.
Just have my hand ready, that's it.
All right, all right. Just want to make sure I'm not over speaking. So next, we're going to step into, I know we got a lot of information to cover here. So we're going to pass the mic to TZA and kind of give, let you give us an opportunity to go to the next slide and explain what we're seeing there in your.
Okay, thank you. TZA Rutherford, the city's homeless outreach administrator. So looking at the data that you have, you can see that there's absolutely increase of need of individuals needing assistance in the community. So over the last three years, as you will see, the need increases not only with unsheltered individuals, but individuals who are unstably housed. And I want to continue to focus on that theme as we continue over this particular slide. The reason for individuals facing housing insecurity is often due to increase in rent, change in circumstances, change in employment, many factors. Recent conversation with Together Center and many of my other agency partners are already indicating that funding is strapped, resources are spread thin, and there's not enough to go around to serve the need of calls that they're experiencing every day. Based on compiled data over the last two years, the average amount of time that I spent with each person is about four hours. Some are light touch, who just need some resources after stopping by at the Community Resource Center, for example. Others require a lot more time in creative problem solving due to the complexity of their situation. 2023, January, up until present, so far, I have spent 1,293 contact hours over 2,130 contacts. The majority of my referrals for service come through nonprofit partners, but I also get about two calls a week from Redmond Police requesting onsite service for a call that I'm dispatched out to. One story I wanted to illustrate, illustrates the full rate of support and the time that it takes to help clients move on towards their stability goals. So this was a call I received about March of 2022. There was a female who was needing assistance, and I didn't know any more at that time. So I went out to the address, and it turns out there was a female who was in, in abusive relationship, needed to get out of that situation immediately, but she was autistic. She had extreme anxiety. She had zero income. She had no family members that she could turn to and literally nowhere that she could go. So after about 15 minutes of quickly trying to build rapport with this client, we made a plan for her to come with me, and we would take her to a Women's Day Center and see what further supports could be offered. I called all of the domestic violence, as well as women's shelters, but there was no capacity for her, and especially none that would accommodate a dog. So I needed to use my emergency flex funds to arrange hotel for a few nights. I was meanwhile able to identify a shelter who would accommodate her and her dog in a few days, but needed a little bit of time. So after I got her to the hotel, I was able to pick up some food for her to sustain herself for the next brief period. Two days later, took her to the shelter. I was able to use an emergency housing voucher that I had received through Council's approval, thank you very much, to get the housing application started for this individual. But there were still many needs. I needed to take her to Department of Human Services to get her signed up for food benefits, connected her with Medicaid health insurance, and was able to identify a therapist for her who could begin to address the trauma that she had experienced in addition to her anxiety and autism. So this individual was in, able to utilize public transportation. She had court hearings coming up that she was very fearful of. I connected her with the Redmond Police DV Advocate, and I accompanied her to her court hearing so that she would have some support by her side as she faced some difficult circumstances. After about three months, I was able to get her transitioned into a new housing opportunity. I needed to make sure that it was near all of her local service providers, as well as food and stores, because she, again, couldn't take public transportation. Everything needed to be in walking distance. So once she was successfully housed, we continued with wraparound support to get her to her therapist appointments until she was able to start feeling comfortable utilizing the bus on her own, helped her to apply for disability benefits, which also required medical providers and additional appointments that she needed transport to. But it's been about a year and a half, and she has maintained her housing, and she feels comfortable in her community. She's got her supportive resources that she's connected to, and she's able to ride the bus to come and meet with me as often as she needs to. So that was a success story. But you'll see, this was dozens of hours spent on the backend support, providing case management and supportive services for this individual. And it was a 15-minute point of contact with, with police response to go out and meet her for the first time. This other story that I wanted to just briefly describe illustrates the, the challenges that come with spending a lot of time on the backend case management support and me not being able to always respond for calls to service when they do come up. So there was an individual who was unhoused in the Redmond Bellevue area for about 18 years. Many people probably would recognize him around the library. He goes by the name Bear. He unfortunately committed a crime in his teenage years that continued to follow him on into his adult life. This prevented him from accessing traditional housing. And so with his limited income, which was a disability income, in addition to this charge, having no recent rental history, zero credit score, housing opportunities were virtually impossible for him to navigate. He was exposed to Agent Orange through his father, who served in the Vietnam War. He's 50 years old now, and he, his health has declined due to a number of degenerative chronic medical conditions, and he anticipates only having a few years of life left. So we did not want to see him facing these years out on the streets in the cold during the winter times. So we were able to identify that he wanted a permanent supportive housing opportunity where no more than 30% of his rent, his income would go towards rent. And he wanted to live on the east side where his medical care was, where his social supports, where he didn't want to go to Seattle, and that was completely fine. But I told him that that opportunity did not yet exist, but that there was a property called Plymouth Crossing that was under construction, would be completed sometime in the spring or summer of 2023, if you would just hold on a few months, and I could do my best to try to get him into that opportunity. So referrals were open, and I made sure he was the very first applicant to apply, and he was approved and moved into his unit about two months ago. The difficulty came trying to take this individual to round up his necessary documentation. He needed social security documentation, disability, proof of income, all of that. It took about 20 hours of appointments between medical providers, social security, all of these, these different organizations, and I missed multiple calls to go out and respond to other individuals in the community due to being tied down to case management needs. So that's one thing that I would like the Council to look at is the support that's needed on the backend to prevent not only for people from falling into homelessness, but also those who are currently, more recently housed, the support that they're needing to continue to maintain what they currently have. The need is less on the response side and far greater on the case management end. So thank you.
And next slide. Good evening. Brian Coats, Captain with your police department. Here, we're going to show some data of the types and percentage of service calls that were provided by MHP Kroll. It's important to note that a vast majority of the calls for MHP services come through the 911 line or police non-emergency line. And then following that call, the MHP is then deployed with a police officer to respond, to provide whatever levels of service is, is required. This pie chart illustrates data from July 1 of 2022 to the end of June 2023. The font, kind of down at the, at the bottom of the slide's a little small, but I can go into detail, and then you basically put the color next to that level of service into the pie chart. So for the, you got de-escalation for crisis interactions and crisis negotiation, involuntary treatment act, service navigation, court testimony, affidavits, and family services, service assessments, referrals, and resource navigation. And lastly, community, family, witness, victim, and support services. It's, it's also interesting to note that she could have, or MHP Kroll had several interactions or single calls for service where she implemented multiple of these subfactors. So she could go to a call and have to de-escalate a community member, followed by potentially an involuntary commitment for rental health services, and then follow-up and referral services. So that one touch actually has several subtouches and levels of service. The data is all relevant and important. I think the stories really do resonate. Sergeant Jamie Ford, when we went, when we went to a co-responder model, went all in, 110%, if that's possible. He's the commissioned officer's side of the co-response. He and Suzie and other members of our department were recognized for the Outstanding Crisis Intervention Team of the Year recently, and lots of other accolades. So I'd like to introduce you to our newest sergeant, Sergeant Ford. He was going to share a little background about what co-response is and, and his story.
Yes, and as the newest sergeant, I'm a night shift sergeant in between shifts, so please forgive me. I came to Redmond in 2018. That's about the same time we implemented our co-response program. That's about the same time MHP Kroll was hired as well. Traditionally, we've followed the traditional police co-response model, and that's teaming a mental health professional with an officer responding to calls for service that could benefit from social service connections, referrals, de-escalation, and assessment for behavioral health concerns. These aren't just calls that come out as welfare checks or suicide threats. It could be any call for service from a traffic collision to a domestic violence assault, to us serving court orders to somebody, because when the police arrive, it's not necessarily the best day in that person's life. In summation, our co-response aims to de-escalate persons in crisis when needed, improve the quality of interactions with persons in crisis, promote safety for everyone, whether that's that individual, officers, and the MHP on scene, or the community at large. A lot, a lot of the time, we get calls from people's neighbors who are concerned with someone's behavior, and to facilitate access to care. Because if anyone knows personally or through family members and friends, trying to work within public mental health authorities or privatized mental health services, it's not necessarily the most, it's, it's pretty confusing. And it's a process and procedures, those change yearly as far as the services that are available, especially with mental and behavioral response, especially since 2020. As an officer in MHP, we have distinct jobs, but there are co-relating roles that work within a common goal, work towards that common goal, and that is achieving some sort of resolution and long-term resolution for this person in crisis. This requires exhaustive problem solving and calculated decision-making within very fluid situations, whether or not a crime has occurred. If a crime has occurred, what does the police need to address? What can the MHP come in and assist as far as de-escalating, working with families, and providing resources as far as if this person has to go to jail that day? What is available to them whenever they get released? And coordinating with psych nurses and jail nurses before that person's arrival? What is the nature of the crisis? As officers, we're trained not to diagnose, but to articulate observed behaviors, but a lot of times it is nice to have an MHP there to say, hey, this person's experiencing acute psych, psychosis, probably escalated by some THC use. So knowing kind of exactly what's, what's going on is, is extremely helpful when de-escalating someone. Officers are the ones who are providing the scene safety. So if we have consent to be inside someone's home and they're expressing suicidal thoughts, an officer will typically be standing between that person and the kitchen where there's, you know, a lot of kitchen knives present and whatnot. And the officers always are determining what our legal authority is to remain on scene, and what is the governmental interest. So if someone is suicidal in a park surrounded by a lot of people, may or may not be armed, that's a high governmental interest for us to remain on scene and to address that individual and bringing that crisis to some sort of resolution. Whereas if someone's suicidal alone by themselves in their residence, that's a relatively low governmental interest, and we don't necessarily need to push that, that contact any further than it has to. Co-response offers a personal trauma-informed response to a person in crisis. We all know that mental behavioral illness is something that is very stigmatizing, but when it reaches to a point of crisis that desuscitates a police response, that can be something else entirely. When there's a lot of police cars, an ambulance, maybe a ladder truck on the street, someone can really feel alienated from their community. So what we found is by addressing the trauma that comes with a person in crisis by demonstrating transparency and fairness in the process, and showing that individual that we're willing to exhaust all options available, that's helped a lot to reduce that, that trauma hallmark. And by encouraging that person to have a voice and participate in the process, has really allowed that person to take ownership of their own treatment and their own long-term care, whether that's involuntary treatment, a person transitioning from independent living to assisted living, or just a teenager receiving counseling resources for the first time. We found that our MHP's follow-up is the most of what she does. About 75% of her working hours is devoted to phone calls, text messages, emails, virtual meetings with either the person themselves, their family members, friends, King County Designated Crisis Responders, service providers, other agencies that have contact with that, with that individual. So it kind of lines up with what we've been saying on the, on the fire side as well. One of our good examples, in 2019, we started contacting a young adult transgender female. She was in the early stages of her transition. Her backstory, she was a band at birth. She had many health complications from fetal alcohol syndrome. She was on autism spectrum. She was developmentally delayed. She bounced around between four different counties within Washington and as a juvenile before finding stable guardians in Kirkland. At 18, she found herself in Redmond. She was then unhoused. Her guardian still resided in Kirkland. She had PTSD from repeated sexual assault encounters as a child, and she was suicidal and homicidal. This was accelerated by heavy substance abuse between heroin, meth, and she liked to shoplift cold, flu, and high blood pressure meds to attempt to, to get some sort of high off of those. She carried around a very realistic-looking pellet gun in public, which was our, one of our primary concerns, but she carried that for protection. And her guardians in Kirkland wouldn't allow her to live there because of her homicidal, suicidal statements for fear of their safety and their child's safety, but they very much remained, remained involved in, in her care and, and addressing her, her needs and, and working with us. So we often contacted her from the police side following criminal complaints such as shoplifting, trespassing, and welfare checks, whether she was located, passed out outside, or an officer came, came across her. Our MHP initially tried offering resources, support, assistance, both involuntarily and voluntarily. We first developed a safety plan, so she didn't feel the need that she had to carry a pellet gun around. And the MHP specifically, she spoke with her exhaustibly through texts and phone calls, mostly just allowing her to vent. MHP Kroll, she discovered that she couldn't just go straight into offering resources. The involuntary treatment wasn't helping. She had to spend the time to build rapport and trust for. She had to spend the time to build rapport and trust first, before she was able to really suggest what is best needed for this person. She spoke with the MHP because at the time, she didn't trust service providers, counselors, or treatment facilities due to past experiences. That wasn't just with police, but it was within her foster care system and counselors she had run in with the past. So it took a long time to build that rapport and that trust. MHP Kroll worked hard in crisis mitigation. She first established a foundation of emotional safety with this person, and worked with her on discerning if she was actually suicidal, or if she was merely expressing her emotions in the only way that she knew how. A lot of follow-up conversations went into emotional awareness and compartmentalization. From there, we worked on problem-solving and healthy decision-making, and this developed into long-term goals. Eventually, we were able to create referrals to treatment facilities and worked with other social service providers. And we were even able to locate a shelter in Seattle that specialized in transgender services. We worked with the guardians. We went over the processes of what the MHP was doing and how they could help. We developed safety plans for them as well, and we helped them understand their daughter's actions and self-destructive behavior, kind of offered them an idea of what she was going through. In culmination, in two months, the female overdosed near fatally numerous times, often immediately upon discharge from the hospital, and often in public areas. The MHP kept communication with the guardians, updating them of each contact and hospitalization so that they were in the know every step of the way. And thanks to many affidavits and referrals made by MHP Kroll, this person was admitted into long-term drug treatment. Eventually, she ceased all narcotic use and moved in with her guardians throughout her outpatient care. Today, she has her own apartment and remains stable, and she routinely reaches out to myself and MHP Kroll just to share how she's doing. I don't know if that was, if you have time for the second, I wonder if that's good.
So, thank you. Next slide, please. This slide represents referrals to our MIH team from Fire EMS rescues after 911 calls. And I think what we want to share here is that, now again, this is specific to Fire, but there's an educational effort going on currently, both within Fire and within law enforcement, that recognize the value of the concepts of coordinated care, and certainly that MIH has the ability to provide that. During this, July of 2020 through, one-year period, July of 2020 through June of 2023, 118 total clients were referred to MIH through the 911 system from our providers in the field, from 179 responses. This represented about 400 referrals, and I think this is an important piece to this, is that often there are multiple referrals related to a single patient or client interaction. This is a, this goes to the complexity of each of these cases, and the time that it takes to work through and process these individuals, much like has been already described here. And it also displays why the concepts of wraparound services are so important. We can't do this with 15-minute touch. This has got to be something that we circle back on, these individuals, days, weeks, and months later. We also looked at data from all of our EPCR during a four-year period. This was a question that came up about what is truly the scope of mental and emotional illness inside our areas of response that we currently work. Over a four-year period of time, we looked at that data, and clearly, it's a growing number for sure, but it's also important to understand the magnitude of the mental health concerns that are here. Not every one of these that were coded in that manner were mental health crisis. These were just people that were recognized as having mental or emotional needs that needed to be continued care in a clinical environment. And that information's at the bottom of the screen. There is growth. In 2019, we saw 487, steady growth through 2022 up to 692. Now, recognize that that's out of approximately 10,000 calls annually that those numbers represent. You'll see that 2020, we had a lower number, and that, I intentionally highlighted that just for awareness, and that the data from 2020 is questionable because we, our call volume was clearly down, and a lot of people were dealing with things, maybe, or maybe not dealing with things, but more in the home, which can bring in a lot of other aspects. The next data point we'll share is exactly where our MIH referrals came from, and what we, how they got categorized. You'll see that the vast majority of these are falls, healthcare needs. Oh, I'm sorry, I advanced on mine. I apologize. You'll see that the vast majority of these are falls, healthcare and self-care needs. These continue to represent the highest level of community health concerns within our community here in Redmond. Certainly, again, as I said earlier, there's unstable housing. This is probably not a fair representation because this is only looking at MIH data. This is not representative of other data, either from law enforcement or from the Human Services Group with TESA. So I'm going to pause here, and Liz and her team are going to have to take time to share a little bit of stories to, of what we've learned over our time since we've started MIH, and some of the impacts that we've had, both in a positive realm and negative that turned positive, so.
Hello. You guys can all hear me okay? My name's Liz. I'm one of your paramedics. I've worked for Redmond for a long time, and I'm part of your mobile integrated health team. I brought one of my partners, Sunshine Manning, one of our firefighters that is also a mobile integrated health worker. One thing I think when we start this conversation to really emphasize is that community health is a medical problem. So when we talk about mental health crisis, or we talk about overdose, or we talk about falls, or we talk about needing connection to primary care, those are medical emergencies. They need to be treated the same as chronic hypertension, diabetes. We need to lose the stigma. We need to understand that mental health is an issue that we need to address. And as Chief Whitney talked about, in 2020, when we had our reduced calls, one of the hardest things we can do to people is isolate people and not let people have access to services and people. And so we did that kind of in COVID with safety issues, but knowing that that really is a big impact on mental health, and that's when we're going to start to see people come back out now and ask for help. So I've got a couple of stories for you. I've got some that are good and some that didn't work, but that's the reality of when we work with people, we're going to have different outcomes. So I'm going to start negative. I'm going to start with one of my clients that it didn't work out like I expected. So I had a fail, failed by my standard. I met this client out in Duval in 2018. She was living in a travel trailer. She called us for chronic alcoholism, falls, things like that, lady in her 60s. She was, after working with her for multiple times, setting her up with doctor's appointments and transportation, and being way out east is difficult to get transportation, even District 34 is difficult, but deep Duval is hard. And so we get her rides, we do all the good things, we work with social work, we get her set up housing in Redmond, so we move her in here to Redmond. We get her full wraparound care. We have full-time caregivers in the facility. She's still not able to live independently. She falls chronically, she continues to drink, she doesn't engage in chemical dependency resources, all that are made available to her. It is her choice to not engage in those services. It is our choice to support her and our right, or what we should do. So we continue to support her, but she continues to fail. She falls frequently, she calls 911 multiple times a week. Her caregivers quit because they cannot take care of her because she's exceeding that level of care to be at home. But she's decisional, and she gets to make those choices to stay at home. So even though she had every opportunity, we gave her every resource, she had full benefits from the state. She had care providers, she had chronic check-ins from, police were there frequently, fire was there a lot, mobile integrated health was there weekly. She still continued to slip through the cracks in and out of medical rehab, and eventually she ended up breaking her leg and had to go to skilled nursing, was not able to live independently. So it's important to understand that we can give people a really good plan, but people still get to make decisions. And part of taking care of people is understanding that they get to have that right, and that it's our job to respect them and give them that dignity to make that decision. It might not be the plan I would suggest for people, but people are allowed to make those decisions. Another client I want to talk about is a client that has a couple that had lived in Redmond for over 20 years, chronic 911 users. On May 5 of 2021, they called 911 47 times for cardiac arrest, and in that time, nobody was ever transported to the hospital. This was chronic alcoholism. And so with that, that person, we had met multiple times. We had had Adult Protective Services come out, we had designated crisis responders, we had developed alternative response plans, worked with our medical program director, so we did not send that initial cardiac arrest response. They would get a different response because we knew they had different needs. And so we worked with them, we identified good in-home counseling during the time of COVID too, when people couldn't go into the office. You know, it's really hard to set a person up that's not familiar with teams and have them run that platform when they don't have an email. And so it's very difficult during that time. But we were able to go and set it up in their home and get them all dialed in. We enrolled their family, we had regular check-ins, we set them up with primary care physicians. And following that, they have been sober. We have not heard from them in the 911 capacity. They'll still call in and check in with us and tell us how they're doing, but they do not call 911 for personal care or for sobriety issues anymore. And so the big thing to take from this too, and that's what I really appreciate this group, is that it's a multidisciplinary approach to healthcare, because this is what this is. This is medical healthcare. And people hear it different from different people. Sometimes they jive with TESA, and sometimes they love working with the police. And I think that we need to have that high level of flexibility when we provide service to people, to understand that I might want it different than Sunshine might want it. So she has one story that she's going to talk about too.
Hello. I'm Sunshine Manning, firefighter with Redmond for a little over five years. I just wanted to start by saying that I started this career because I like solving problems. I like helping people, working together as a team. And you solve a different type of problem when you respond to a 911 call on an aid car or on a fire engine than when you are in this MIH capacity. And so that's what really drew me to be involved in MIH, because I like solving short-term problems, in-your-face problems, but I also like solving the long-term problems too. And sometimes you don't solve them, but at least, you know, we get the opportunity. So I'm really, really grateful to be on this team. It's been, it's been a great experience so far. So the one story that I have to share is a male in his 20s. He's a veteran. He has a substance abuse issue, had a substance abuse issue, lives with his mother, and was a frequent 911 caller for legitimate overdoses. But also, his mother had a strong language barrier. She only spoke Mandarin, and she would call because she thought he had overdosed, which is completely legitimate. So we saw this family a lot. And I was part of the aid crew that responded multiple times to overdoses where he was transported to the hospital, but also ones where we had the opportunity to take the time to educate his mother on our stay-at-home Narcan program. She was keeping the Narcan in her car, which is not super helpful if you're overdosing in your living room. But she also had a strong language barrier and was unable to take a deep breath and take the time to really learn how to use this medication. So once again, it's really great to offer these programs, and it's really important to offer programs, but part of what we do is we follow up with them and make sure that they can open the package and read the instructions, and maybe we have a throwaway one that we can use. So we provide a lot of follow-up care with this family. We did weekly check-ins with both mother and son. He ended up going into jail a couple of times, but ultimately ended up getting connected with resources to help with his rehabilitation. He got connected with Vet Resources, and the check-in a couple of weeks ago was very, very positive. He's sober, he's doing great. Mother feels really supported as well. So it was a huge success story for me personally, because I was, you know, at that cardiac arrest where he was, you know, not breathing, didn't have a pulse, to now, months later, where, you know, he has the support that he needs, as well as his mother. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. On this slide also, I think it's important to recognize what MIH has done, and again, this is data from data that we have through the Gelata platform. We are able to look at actual utilization, reduction in utilization of systems. We've seen a 33% reduction in 911 activations and a 20% reduction in emergency room administration, or admittance, sorry. The, I think it's an important data point for us to look at. It's one of the things we, that we take great pride in, the fact that we are actually seeing reductions, and that's looking over a period of eight months, looking, four months prior to contact, and then four months after resolution of whatever the context of the issue may have been. And I think that's important data. It's something we do track, and I think it is, it's a reference point on success that was just spoken about. This next slide, I think, is something to reflect upon for all of us. We are building something very special inside Redmond with the Thrive program. And it's everybody. It's everybody at this table tonight, and it's the work that's been done leading up to today. In 2016, the recognition of need was identified, and a partnership between King County EMS and Redmond Fire Department took off with the MIH pilot project for King County. That was the first of what we know today for community care within the county that was structured and organized through public safety. 2019 through 2022, the Thrive team development and awareness of what really truly was out there within our community kind of has taken off. I think tonight is, today is a big day for us, and how we move forward now will make a difference. Expanding the structure and support within the concept of community care coordinators is a big step, but it truly is the foundational step that we need to take. And what it leads us to in the future is the expansion of supportive response and care to ensure the robust community health programs that we talked about. And that's inclusive of a lot of the things that we've heard from the community's desires to have. The bottom line is this, is the concepts of having co-response models and things like that is a great concept, but it will fail if we don't close the cycle, right? The cycle that we started this conversation with is such an important piece of this. That 15-minute touch will not make the difference because we just, we create an environment of repetitive cycle. What we need is the staff in the behind-the-scenes to take on and support everything that's been talked about here tonight as far as those success stories. We need to have that backbone and structure to support that so that we can close on these big, these big cases that really matter. We are seeing growth. There's absolutely no doubt about it. We will continue to see growth in all veins, in all dispositions, not just in mental health, but in all the other areas too. We currently are experiencing something unprecedented in the United States with 10,000 people a day turning 65. Was not a big deal 10 years ago when that started because they were 65 then. Now they're 75, and the demands are significant on the systems. We are seeing failures at the hospital because they can't manage that. But there's going to be a heavy emphasis to lean on public safety to help support that in community health, and a piece of that certainly, we know the growth is happening with mental health because we see it every day. What we don't see every day, we do, but what the community doesn't see every day is what's happening inside people's homes and the failures that are occurring inside that with baby boomer generation turning 65. We can do better in Redmond. We are doing great things, but it's, this is an opportunity for us to expand to the next level, but we have to have the structure and the background to support that as we move forward. So I'll stop there. I'm going to pass it to Captain Coats and Chief Shepherd to close us out.
Yeah, I'll take it from here. Thank you, Chief Whitney. So this evening, is that the slide we're on? I will let you take that slide then.
I thought it was mine.
Okay.
Yeah, as you've been hearing here for the past, all the stories, all the, all the stories, it's that there's the initial touch, and that's the easy part. It's the follow-up care, it's the handoff, it's the getting to a point where people aren't calling 911 all the time to getting the health and care that they need. So with that, we formed a job description as to what we would envision the community care coordinators to do in the course of their daily jobs, and I'll just review them briefly for you. They will ensure that the community members are connected to available social services, provide day-to-day support for PD's co-response, mobile integrated health, and human services, add calls for service into contact databases, conduct needs assessments and make connections to services, and aid in successful transition to those services. If requested by the community member, provide assistance filling out applications for services, intake paperwork, and other social services documents. Establish and maintain a referral system for community contacts. Provide contact tracking information for service integration. Direct call response from people who are requesting behavioral health and/or social services connections, and who are not presenting a safety or crisis risk, and no crimes are being reported. Call response requested by police officers who, community care coordinators will also respond to calls by police officers in the field who are on the scene with people in crisis and have determined that no need, there is no need for law enforcement.
Okay, now it is time for me. First, we want to thank you for your attentiveness to this. On this last slide, what we're really asking for is that we are advocating for three full-time community care coordinators to enhance our public services. These coordinators will be vital for optimal service delivery for our community outreach. In addition, we want to allow us, you to allow us to put measures in place that focus on seamless communication and client handoff, eliminating bottlenecks and lapses that ensure timely and appropriate care for our clients. and appropriate care for our clients. And additionally, we want to invest in technology that is critical to an efficient, integrated system. Assessments aim to empower coordinators, minimize delays and optimize resources in deployment. With that said, I want to thank you for the pleasure of your time this evening, and I also want to say we welcome all of your questions.
Thank you all so much. Clearly a collaborative and team effort here on this presentation, and I think this met all of the expectations that we initially had in wanting to further this conversation and wanting to dive deeper on this topic. So I really appreciate you all, and I'll open it up for questions. Who wants to go first? Councilmember Anderson, thank you.
I have many questions, but I narrowed it down to four, if that's acceptable. So thank you so much for the presentation. I'm really proud of everybody here, so thank you for sharing all those stories. It's been lovely to listen to those stories, good or bad. Lessons learned are always really helpful to move forward as well. The first comment or question I had that came up was, and I think this was from Ms. Rutherford, you asked, or possibly Chief Shepherd, I'm not sure. It sounds like the goal of this program is independence, and I wanted to get clarification on what is meant by that. And I also heard stability from, I think, Ms. Former Downs. So can you clarify that a little bit? Like, what's the goal or the objective?
I'll speak to it briefly. I think that our ultimate goal is independence. It's not always achievable 100%, but to try and... And again, every situation is different, so it's difficult to say this is...
Independent from the public health system, does that mean?
Independence of themselves, yeah. So in a place where they are comfortable being... And again, could be comfortable aging gracefully at home in a safe environment, could be off the streets, independent, and living in a home similar to the story that Teesa told.
Without public support?
Without public support. And the goal is to not put us in a position... We've heard loud and clear, and we understand that what we're ultimately trying to do is get clients to a place where they are relieved of the burden of inconvenience for themselves, but also at a place where we have solved their problems through resource acquisition. Now, that doesn't mean that they won't continue to have access to resources that are needed, but it won't necessarily be through the city of Redmond. And that's the ultimate goal, is that level of independence where they're healthy and happy in the environment they have. And yes, they may still have access to resources, but they won't necessarily be our resources. Now, that's not to say that, right now, Liz does a lot of the work Liz does is follow-up, just checking in, how are you doing? How are things progressing? Are you making your appointments? Those kinds of things. But those are quick phone calls, and that's just a touch. But it's not the burden of work that had been there before.
Great. Thank you so much for that clarification. I appreciate it. And the next question I had came up when, Ms. Rutherford, you mentioned your backend case management support. Is that like administrative work or more similar to the job description that we just saw with the CHC? Specifically, my question is on case management, and then if it's possible to separate case management and also protect client data? Or do you need to have the same person handling a case?
I think that was more than four questions. No, I completely understand where you're tracking. So the case management, I mean, that does involve appointments, it does involve a lot of paperwork, it involves like lining up move-in expenses, scheduling appointments, medical, behavioral health, transporting, so any and all of that.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. And this is a question, I think, for Captain Coats and Chief Shepherd. What is the current FTE? If we're being asked for three FTE, what's the current FTE of the Thrive program?
Actually, I don't have the number as far as the full number of people in Thrive program.
Is it six?
No, it's very... I would say it's probably three. I don't think there's specified FTEs associated with Thrive currently. Essentially, one person per agency, and then there's a lot of accessory support from other staff.
Okay. And so we're asking to double the size of the program?
Correct, essentially.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the last question I had, I think this was for you, Mr. Whitney. What's the percentage of the community, since you mentioned the seniors, that is using this Thrive program that's over 55? Do we have a good idea of what percentage of the age range?
I can give you, based off of our referrals that we have into the system, or I'm sorry, the MIH referrals, the...
I'm just looking at the falls data as an example, it's like most likely...
It's a relatively large number, I think I can tell you. I don't have it exactly right in front of me. We can probably pull it through Gelato with some of the work that we have available there. I'm going to guess it's over 60%.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Please.
We track our folks at age of over 65 because in the state of Washington, you have to be over the age of 60 to be considered a vulnerable adult with adult protective services. So a lot of our plus 55 communities, when you meet them, they're not eligible for some of those vulnerable adult services until they reach that threshold of age 60 unless they have a disability that requires in-home medical care or they're a guardian of the state. So it is an older group, an awesome group, but it's usually plus 65.
Thank you. Appreciate that clarification, too.
Sunshine, please.
I just wanted to add, too, that a lot of what we do isn't specifically just reaching members of the community, it's also within our department. So a lot of the time that we spend is on follow-up emails to crews because sometimes crews go and they see the same person, you know, five times in a month, and so they're like, "All right, MIH, what's going on?" And we are able to give them, you know, start to finish of what we're doing, what resources we've connected them with, what resources they've denied, and, you know, if they have been visited by the King County Fall Prevention, if we did get them connected with a social worker with DSHS. And so, yes, a lot of what our hours are spent doing are following up with our clients and are managing this caseload, but so much of what we do goes back to the fire department and goes back to our medics. And there's a very strong... There's intention to educate our department on how to help people because if people don't... If, you know, if our firefighters don't know what pushing the MIH button on our reports does, then they're not going to do it. So I just want to stress that, like, a lot of this data is really good on the people that we're helping and the categories that they fall into. But so much more of what we do is that wraparound care education within our department. We have so many new people, and I think that's one really important thing that got jumped over. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just follow up on that. If we can go back to slide number seven, please.
Now you're testing my skills. Not too bad.
Yep, okay.
Seven?
Okay, yep. Absolutely. So, and not solely attributable to MIH being at Station 11, but just through conversation, we understand that there's obviously a lot of calls that come through Station 11 and then in this district, coincidentally where Mobile Integrated Health is located. And that's because that proximity, we're able to have a little bit more conversation with the crews, not saying that we don't have them with crews elsewhere, and certainly there's area for improvement, but we believe that some of that increase is associated to the fact that we are educated in our workforce. And so we hope to... Obviously, we want lower numbers all the way around, but we also want to make sure that we do have that fluency throughout the organization and that understanding of what they are going to be encountering and how to respond when they do.
Thank you.
I'm going to follow up just briefly, too. I think it's super important to recognize some of the work that Susie did, some of the work that happens with our MIH team led by Liz is also educating our workforce on how to respond and how to diffuse incidents, how to recognize... Remember, we talked about 179 total responses, but 400 were total referrals. You know, be aware of what's happening within the home, and are there areas that we could have impact in a positive way in those people's lives? So I'm glad that Sunshine brought this point up because it's a really good point, is there is a significant amount of education that goes in to training the workforce, both in law enforcement and PD. Susie was exceptional at it in helping us with diffusing. Liz is in the process of taking classes on that to further her education, but also to help come back and educate the rest of us. And that's something that shouldn't be lost either, is that, again, Redmond is unique, and the uniformed personnel here are very well-prepared to address the issues that we're seeing within the society better, I think, honestly, than in a lot of places throughout the nation. And I think that it's important that we recognize that, whether this is the right time or not.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Thank you, Council President. I really appreciate putting the human experience, I guess is kind of a, not a great word to describe it, but what happens to us as a community, as a society, and I think sharing that with elected officials, I don't think we can do it enough. We end up talking about a lot of statistics, we talk about a lot of data, and we talk about affordability as an idea or a concept. But to understand what lack of affordability means, or what the addiction or mental health problems mean to human beings, I think is really important for decision-makers to hear. So first off, I really applaud this meeting. I think it was a rare moment for me in my past six years on City Council, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate all of you. What I want to say is, and you described a sort of a perfect storm scenario where we have a population that's getting older. We have, we are all pretty aware of the pharmas and the opioid crisis that hit us some 20 years ago and has grown into gigantic proportions, and as well as the affordability. And when I read up on what creates homelessness or why is homelessness so difficult to resolve, I hear theories of all of those, you know? Drug addiction or addiction or mental health, very difficult. Affordability, if you had a home, if you could house enough people, they at least have a good start. So the pressures, the enormous pressures are very... It's global, and it's not, obviously, just not in Redmond. So here comes the question. I absolutely think that you're on the right track, but there are other communities dealing with that. And we brought this up a year ago, Councilmember Carson and I, and I think maybe Councilmember Forsythe, of how can we partner with some of these other programs that are emerging? Why do we think we have to go this alone? Or not alone, but independently, I guess.
Great question. So we don't think that we have to go it alone, and I think one of the slides indicated that there would be space for some sort of cold responder at some point. What we do want to proffer is that we want to put together the best program possible that meets the needs of the Redmond community. So we've looked at other programs, we've taken what we thought was good from other programs, what was particular, and taken that and applied it to what's particular here in Redmond. So hopefully, that answers your question as far as what it is we're looking at as far as other programs, not only throughout this region, but nationally. We also understand that some of the ones that are being looked at are not confronted with the same challenges that we're going to be confronted with here in the Redmond community. And so what we've endeavored to do is put a program together that meets all these needs. That's why we have all these specialists here who spoke so eloquently about what it is they do tonight. And I think we've proven that we're doing the right thing. We haven't arrived, we don't think we've arrived, we don't think we have a complete program, but we think we have a good foundation for what we need to do to make well this city.
And Chief Shepherd, just to follow up on that, what I heard tonight was immensely professional and interesting and passionate and compassionate and very... It's hard to say, a discussion like this is uplifting, but the approach that you're taking and the attention to the people who we are trying to help was, in fact, uplifting to me. And I think that the programs and the elements of the programs are... I couldn't agree more with, you know, doing that background work and doing that case management work and doing, making sure that we have a clear idea of not just responding all the time, but how do we prevent? As Councilmember Anderson said, and I don't think your goal is necessarily to make them independent, but it is to get them on a road of recovery. So, and if that leads to independence, great. But, and I totally appreciate the thoughtfulness and the strategy behind. I will have further questions sometime in the future on how we can really be more robust in our resources, and if that means combining resources, and if that is in the future, I'm very much an advocate of that.
I appreciate that. Can I...
May I follow up on...
Can you speak of upstream as well?
Yeah, so first, I want to speak about partnerships because I think it's a really good point, and it's probably something we haven't done, talked about well enough tonight. We have inter-local agreements right now with three agencies around us, almost four in the process, that we work very closely with, with MIH, and support their needs. And they're smaller communities, but philosophically, we have a belief that those communities affect our community in a huge way. And us taking care of members within those communities impacts our community as well. That is, that's about the care we provide and how we do outreach with those other agencies. We also have partnerships that we work with that are subject matter experts' resources to help us provide the appropriate care to the right clients. And part of this ask is not just about the three coordinators, but it's also about providing us the ability to fund some of those contracts of subject matter experts. We don't know, we don't have all the answers. We're not the Jack and Jill's of all trades. We need those resources, and those resources in the past have been beneficial to us because they've helped educate us about how we can do things better. And so there's extreme value there. And I think that building the structure now, supportive of the coordinators as well as access to additional contracts for outside resources, as well as a platform that gives us the ability to track all of our clients together, is part of the growth that's going to really help this go to the next level. We've heard conversations, or I'm sorry, the council heard conversations last week about the racer program that Kirkland's trying to get off the ground, and they are in the infantile state, very much like we were in 2016 with the pilot project that we were doing for MIH. That is a program that has value, but remember, it's 10-minute medicine, what I call 10-minute medicine. We need the support and the background. That's the awareness. That goes back to that very first slide that I talked about with the cycle. That's the notification and the awareness of need. What we're talking about now is there's tons of value in that, but we really need to have the supportive care in the backend to get people out of that cycle. And that'll be part of the partnership, I guess, back to Councilmember Field's message is, something like that, or that, if it's successful, getting off the ground, will be a partnership that we will reach out to, but we first have to have the infrastructure internally to take care of those people that we identify.
Thank you. Ms. Manning?
Try again. Okay, there it is. Real quickly, just to touch on the question regarding partnerships and, you know, I kind of got the sense of, you know, there's all these different agencies, we're all trying to do the same or similar things, why can't we just work together or forward to, you know, another resource that is maybe more specialized? I think that one thing that's really unique about this group and this position is that we respond to these clients' houses. We are able to educate our 911 responders in an appropriate manner to notify your emergency room nurse, your emergency room doctor, of the conditions that this patient, this client, is living in. And that is, that goes so far with client care, with patient care, and it connects those dots so that those people don't get left in the system. So say someone is really unable to care for themselves, they get transported by a private ambulance, which we do not do in here in Redmond, as long as we are able. They get handed off to the emergency room, and then the patient says, "Oh, yep, I have people that take care of me at home, I just need a taxi voucher, and I'll be on my way." Right? And then they go back, and then the same thing happens next week. But what we help do is we help educate our firefighters and say, "Listen, we can do this soft handoff to our social workers and..." soft handoff to our social workers, and really explain to them what their living situation's like, and we call that a soft handoff. I think that's one thing that's really important about a large part of what we do that is different than a lot of the other programs and resources that are out there. And Tiza does the same thing with her warm handoffs, you know, responding on PD calls, and if necessary, transporting to a facility where she can speak on behalf of the patient or the client. So that's what I had to say. Thank you. So just a couple more hands. Go ahead.
And I would just say on the PD side, as far as collaboration, in King County, with law enforcement, we meet at the State Academy once a month, Crisis Intervention Coordinators Committee, and we felt the need to form that because I've heard King County labeled the land of pilot programs, right? Tons, tons of funds are being implemented to start these programs, a lot don't get off the ground, and the money just kind of disappears and go back to where they came from. The other need was to address, to get some sort of database to see who is receiving what services, and who's kind of double-dipping into the same services that do the exact same thing, and kind of counterintuitive. Like Sunshine was saying, a lot of our collaboration is with the continued care element to not just get someone from independence. I've learned words are very important tonight from the planning committee. Not necessarily independence or treatment, like Councilman Field said, but also to have some sense of being a part of their community. Living independently, yes, but the biggest sense that comes from a person who, whether it's a medical crisis, substance abuse, suicidality, mental health crisis, the biggest thing that goes first is their sense of belonging to a community. And that continued care allows them to take ownership of their own treatment, their own recovery, and puts the onus on them to continue working towards themselves, because we just triage this stuff. We respond, we get people back to some sort of baseline, whether it's medically or mentally, and then we leave. And hopefully we can do that with more tools in their tool belt than just saying, well, if you have a computer, Google King County Crisis Coordinators and see the process to receive mental health help. To offer something that's a lot more than that.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart, and then Council Vice President Kritzer.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. What a cool night to be with you all, and as we've had the opportunity for a lot of us to be in the same space a few times in the last year, it's really important for me tonight to make sure you know you were heard, that you have really interdisciplinary work that takes a lot of case management, and there are different parts. That's a different conversation than the one we've been having with members of our community a lot lately, that are more focused on that immediate response, and I would like to talk about that later, but you came to talk about a different piece of the cycle, as I now think of it. I think Slide 3 is the most powerful one in the presentation tonight. And you need a few new teammates for your clients who are our residents and our neighbors, and you need some new tech, and some co-location, and some other tools to do your jobs, too. So it's really important to me that you feel heard on that, on all of those counts. So when it comes to the question before the council tonight, you know, I think the question coming up is, does council want to fund these positions and lend our support to this community health program? And I don't want to skip over the three-and-a-half-page community health program that is so cool and embedded in this packet. I have a couple of questions about the funding. Is this the maximum that we could have, is this the maximum available in that bucket of funds? And are those funds one-time? Does anyone here know the answer to those questions?
I believe these are the funds that we allocated within the budget.
But are they one-time?
I don't believe so.
They're ongoing. Okay, great. So that's really important, and we also have a vacancy in the MHP role currently. We didn't hear anything tonight about a change of course in that regard for that position. Captain Coats?
This weren't.
Sorry, chief.
Go into the podium.
An update would be helpful on that, chief, thank you.
There's no button on this one.
I think it just got turned on for you.
Hello? There we go. So yes, the MHP position is currently vacant, and recruitment has started for that. There is no plan for a change in course or structure for the police department in a co-response model, so the goal is to find another qualified MHP to continue our co-response model to, I won't say supplement, but in accordance with what was presented tonight, to continue down the path that we have currently been on.
Okay. Those are all my questions for the moment. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Vice President Kritzer.
Thank you. Well, first I'll start by echoing my fellow council members, and just expressing gratitude for the amazing work that you all do, and for coming to share with us tonight, and let us in a little bit on some of what your day-to-day is, responding to people in need in our community. I'm sure it takes a lot to, just to think about that as your every single day job, and that's really incredible. So I think the compassion from our public servants in Redmond is super clear, and also the teamwork and partnership. And I love how this group came together to think about, you know, the broader question of how do we make our community healthier, how do we address recurring issues, and if we only have a limited number of resources, where would you put them? And I really respect hearing from all of you about where you would want to see those go. So, thank you. A couple of questions about this proposal, and then a comment. One is, in terms of, it says that they will be, or the goal would be to be co-located physically, what is the vision for the specific three positions for where they organizationally are located?
So organizationally, they would fall into each independent department. However, we would co-locate them in one central area, and we're currently looking at an area here inside City Hall.
So it'd be one in police, one in fire, one in human services, or?
That's correct.
Okay, great. So I guess, I think, similar to some of the question a little bit that Councilmember Stewart brought up, is that we have been hearing a lot of feedback from our community on this issue, and, you know, part of what we originally allocated in terms of this funding was to have two community responders that would be focused on that more initial crisis response. And then, and then to give you all, I think there was another pot of money to be determined, and we thought it might go to MIH as part of it when we were in the throes of the budget process, and then said, come back to us, and this is you coming back to us, which is wonderful. I think the idea when we heard from community members at that time, and in doing the levy, and then even now we've been getting a lot of emails and messages from community members that are hearing this discussion, who are saying, hey, we really cared about the crisis response piece. And I hear you all in terms of the need to be able to do that ongoing response, but I do feel like it is a bit of a different question in terms of how do we provide more resources for those folks that are dealing with crises in the moment? And I wonder if it's really a little bit more if we take the really great work that you're doing, and what it would look like if we were to kind of flip at least two of the job descriptions on their head, right? And kind of start with that crisis response, but then still have the ability to do that You know, I noted, as you said, that 75% of what our existing MHP was doing was follow-up, right? So, but she was trained to be able to do that response, and to be, when calls came in, to be able to take that. So I guess I'm wondering if there's a way, a path forward in which we could work also with those in our community that are really interested in this topic, to be able to do some more community engagement, which we've been asked about, is to be able to actually sit down with impacted community members and folks that really follow this issue, to kind of just talk through this great, all this great information with them, get that feedback, and see if there's a way that we could model these positions to be able to get at that need, while also providing, you know, the resources and support that I'm hearing from all of you. So I guess I'll ask, did you consider that? How does that sound?
Absolutely. So thank you for your comments, and Jim, I think you might want to say something here, but we do, we're attentive to the community, we hear them, we, you know, we take their inputs, and I think that informs a lot of the decisions that we make as far as the construct that we have for the program right now. Going back to my earlier comments, we don't believe that this is a complete program. We know that there's opportunity for growth, and as we learn, as we go along the way, we will make those adjustments as necessary. And we do come to you tonight for the ask of those three positions, because we believe those are necessary right now, on top of the fact that we need an area to locate our people, and have a means of, or platforms for communications across each discipline. But your comments are well received, and yes, we are doing what you've asked, and we'll continue to do that, and we always encourage and solicit community member input.
Go ahead. I'll just add, too, I think that it's important to recognize, this work is not new to us, and when we started the pilot program, we did it with on-duty personnel, and it was very difficult to be responsive to the needs of clients that we were interacting with with MIH. And Tiza kind of expressed this earlier, and it's a true fact that we learned as part of the growth of MIH is that we were on-duty personnel, trying to make contacts with clients, trying to make contacts with resources, and getting tapped out to go on calls to respond to emergent care, disrupting that flow of work, and not being able to complete it, and having to circle back and start all over again. And that, that interaction in hit-and-miss was extending the care plan for those people, and not necessarily getting it done when they needed to get it done, and it was disruptive. And honestly, it created failures. We went intentionally, we made the decision to put somebody in full-time into that position as a paramedic, to really focus on the day-to-day, to have a connection point there, to do the work, to have better outcomes for the clients. And that's why we're so passionate about the fact that we need to have the structure in place first. That's not to say that the concepts of an alternative response is positive, it's a good thing, it's the right direction for us to go, and as the chief said, we're not done yet, but we need this structure in place first to make sure we have the ability to, for that work to be offloaded to people that are going to be focused on making the connections and connecting those clients to the right resources for them, and do the follow-up without interruption. And I think that's the biggest piece of this. The other piece I will add is that we have created also, to some level, and this goes back to Councilmember Fields' question about partnerships, we have partnerships with Crisis Connections as an example. 988, if it's a 988 phone call that comes in, which is not getting enough publicity yet, it will, in the near future, be more and more advertised, but those calls come in, the immediate action is taken by the Crisis Connection team there in Seattle, but that information's passed back off to our MIH team if it's somebody that's local in our community, so we can do the follow-up and connect with them. So some of that stuff is happening now, and we want to expand on it, but we need to make sure we have the appropriate structure in place to support it.
I do have a follow-up, but I don't know.
Mayor Bernie?
I want to add a little bit and build on, talking about where Redmond is now, where we can go, and where we've been. So we, many of these programs have come about because of community input. Tiza's position in particular, we had a great upswelling of concern from our community starting in 2015 about homelessness in our community, and part of it was putting together a community task force that, one of the decisions that was made that the city acted on was to create this position that she's in, which has been a groundbreaking position in the entire region. We are one of the first cities to have done it, and many cities copy us for that. Mobile Integrated Health has a similar path forward, where we were on the forefront of that when Medic One, I think, chose to do some pilot programs, and Redmond said, yes, please, let us be part of those pilot programs to develop that. When the state allowed, had grant funding for Susie Crowles' position, the city said, yes, we need that in our community, let us take advantage of that, grant funding and put it in place in the city. What we're doing now is trying to take those positions, now we've made them general fund, now we fund them fully, and we are saying, let us once again be on the forefront of what does it take to really catch these situations upstream, stop them from calling us in a good way, where they don't need our resources anymore. So I see this as an evolution, and continuing to be on the forefront of what these kind of services can be for our community. I know there are a lot of other programs out there, and in discussing these programs with different communities, Kirkland and others, they don't have this foundation that they are talking about and needing to put in place some years to come from now, but we are at this place now. So this is my plea to listen to the data, and listen to the staff that has really worked really hard to put this together, trying to understand what's the next step, and making sure we have a really good, robust program, and it is that backend work that is really the place where we need the assistance at this time. Thanks.
Oh, go ahead.
One thing I do really want to emphasize is, it sounds really nice when we're sitting in this room to have somebody show up at your house in five minutes and give this 10-minute street medicine, but when you talk to any mental health professional, any psychologist, anybody who does long-term mental health care, it doesn't happen, and it doesn't get solved in 15 minutes. It's how you create system trauma, when you show up and you make appointments. When I show up at your house at 2:00 in the morning, you don't remember what my name is, what I'm wearing, anything. So when I make five appointments for you to go and try to follow up on Monday, and nobody does that backend follow-up and make sure you have transportation, make sure that you understand that you need to be outside when the cab picks you up, when you don't have that follow-up, you fall through the cracks, and you create system trauma. So it's really important to emphasize and understand that you can have somebody show up, but if there's nowhere to go at 2:00 in the morning, there's still nowhere to go. And this isn't a Redmond problem, this is a whole county issue, is we don't have crisis diversion centers that people can go at 2:00 in the morning, and so when we have this long-term care, I can look at you and go, hey Vanessa, it sucks right now at 2:00 in the morning, but I'm going to be back at 7:00, and at 7:00, we're going to fill out the forms, I'm going to show you where all the shelters are, I'm going to show you how to do, how to get funds and food, we're going to go over to Hope Link, we're going to set you up, we're going to get you a bus pass, and that's how you create the trust in your community, that's how you start to really move that needle forward. Showing up and fast, and it doesn't solve the problems. It really creates system trauma, if you don't have follow-through. That's my love heart.
Thank you all, I really appreciate all those thoughts. I guess one other thought on this is also, though, is, because I think we're a little bit saying, it's really about prioritizing, right? It's like, we'd love to have all these different things, but what do we need first, and what are you all saying we need the most when we look at our different emergency services? So a question perhaps for my colleagues would be for us to think about whether there is a funding, this is a funding problem, right? It obviously is, it comes out of the fact that our levy didn't pass, so we don't have as much funding as we wish we'd have for a variety of emergency response. I do wonder, because, you know, so many of the innovative programs that we're even talking about tonight started as pilots, and earlier today at our finance committee meeting, we were talking about how we are going to be looking at some of our beginning fund balance available that is one-time funds, of whether we might be able to think creatively about, you know, having the ongoing funds that we already allocated, but perhaps looking at whether we want to increase funding for this, and look at any sort of pilot funding through one-time funds. Just to be able to see whether we can answer both the immediate need we're hearing from you all, as well as what our original goals were when we did this budget process, and especially from what we're hearing from our community, and being able to add some more positions that specifically can focus on that crisis response. So just a thought in terms of, I think that's a longer conversation for us, but I would encourage my fellow council members, and hopefully we could talk with the mayor and staff just about whether that's something we can look at.
Thank you. There we go. So I'm going to jump in with my thoughts, and I do see Councilmember Fields' hand after that. First, I just wanted to give kudos to Ms. Rutherford for the story about Bear. I've had many conversations with Bear, and I, from hearing his background and his past, I did not think that was ever going to be possible for him, and I know his diagnosis and his terminal outlook, and I just, you started telling that story, and I was getting choked up, so just amazing, amazing work. So thank you. Okay, compose myself now. So the new positions, I think I read in the notes in the slides, those are open to be peer positions, is that correct? Peer level, so lived experience, not necessarily having Peer level, so lived experience, not necessarily having degrees and, but having the actual lived experience that have, that have gone through these situations. Is that correct? In the, in the work job description?
I don't have all the particulars, but I do recall the discussion and certainly we can incorporate that because I find value in it.
Okay, great. Okay. And then, so of the pie charts that we saw, and I can pull those up if I need to, we had, we had the different call mechanisms and the call types of those, were they leveled against those, the 28 different call types that I think it was LA has designated as not necessarily needing a police response, but could have a community responder? And if they have, if they haven't been leveled against that, will, can we see that in the future of what those call types are and what would not necessarily require a police response?
So, we are in the process of building out the call types.
Okay.
I'm going to circle back to what I said. It's not complete.
Okay. And I do realize that that is more in the co-response mechanism and just want to make sure we're like forward-thinking about what those call types are and who could actually be sent to those. I think for most of us in this conversation, we fully acknowledge the amazing and incredible work that you all are doing. I think it just comes down to that initial response in that crisis moment of who shows up first and the, the impact that that has on the community member experiencing that call. So, I think that's the conversation that we all want to keep having and that we want to, I know that you understand that that's, that's what we're working towards. And I think this conversation tonight really helped level-set everybody in the room to know where we're currently at, the amazing work that's being done and where we still have yet to fill in. So, I just wanted to check on that one. Councilmember Stewart, did you have something to add to that one?
Well, I, I just think actually we all could, we're still speaking for ourselves, I think, a little bit.
Okay, fair enough.
So, I, and I do share so, many of the same, I share a lot of the sentiments and we're still in the conversation stage. So, I, my, my biggest question is like, how do we yes and? How do we give you all what you need tonight because we respect what you do and we, and like, ah, because, ooh, there I go with the we's. So, I caught my own self. I would, where I am right now is I would love to give this team what they need to do their jobs and what they're asking for tonight because I respect their work and believe in the case. And I would love continued, not continued, but a detailed next step on the conversation with community. The word that's come up a lot for me tonight is trauma. So, when I compare a story we heard from a community member last week and then Sergeant Ford, your description of the trauma-informed responses that you provide, how do I reconcile those two? That's just like a legitimate question I have, right? And so, there's more conversation to have on the response piece of the cycle, but I want a yes and those two conversations.
Yeah, I think that's where we're all going. I mean, Chief Shepherd and I in the hallway had a conversation briefly about how this is a yes and conversation. So, I think you've nailed it on that, on that particular note.
May I add just a little bit? I think that part of, part of the request in this is also, and I talked about this a little bit earlier, is additional funds for contracts.
Yeah.
I think you heard last week from members from the community, the discussion about the racer program that's, that's being implemented currently with, between Kirkland and Bellevue and the work that's being done there.
Not Bellevue.
This?
Kirkland, Shoreline, Bothell.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's been conversation with Bellevue, has been included in this. And here's where I'm going, is that, is that solely alone, currently Redmond doesn't have the, the magnitude of need that, to have 24/7 coverage like that. However, what we call Zone One, everything from, from the north end of Brenton to Bothell, from the lake to the Cascade foothills, that there's enough need generated by an area that's that size to have something like the racer program. Inter-local agreements is, are not new to us. This is what we do all the time. That's what Medic One's born off of, is, is an inter-local agreement that handles that. I think that as we move, assuming we move this forward, we, we recognize the need for the structure, which is important. We've talked a lot about that, but we also recognize the need for capacity for contracts and the ability for us to partner with agencies similar to what Kirkland's doing and be a partnership that, that will benefit all of us because it'll open up a, a larger area of need and magnitude, which will justify the, that unit being able to be, move around and, and to respond to those needs. Granted, Murphy's Law will play in, right? There will be a time when they need to be in two places at one time, but at least to get the ball rolling and recognize the, the value of, of a co-response model. But do it in partnership with many other agencies around us because it'll be beneficial to all of us. It'll be fiscally responsible and we're not, to councilmember Fields' point, we're not isolated in silo on our own trying to do and solve this problem because it is a problem that is a Zone One. It's a, it's a global problem, but we can manage Zone One together and, and we can create an environment where we partner with those agencies, work through a dispatch system that already dispatches all the fire service anyway for all of that same location that can start and then, and build upon that for, for other areas like Chief Shepherd said, to a place where eventually we have, we have people in the comm center that are, have awareness, that we all fund together, that have awareness and are listening to every single call that comes in and recognizes this is a call that we need to send the racer team to. Because what we don't want to do on the flip side of this is we do not want to delay critical care either and be in a position where we're too trepidatious to move because of the fear of, of what that, what that'll look like to the individual we need to respond to and we delay care and that, that's a negative outcome or because we're in fear for our own health, uh, safety. So, I think that's a model we can go to, but currently we don't have resources available to us to be able to even to have those conversations unless we dump everything that we have and go have a conversation like that. But again, in my mind, in the position that I sit in, that's a failure because we're not doing the wraparound care piece that we talked so much about.
I think that leads me into one of my next points, which was, this does feel like a natural progression, that at some point we, this will turn into a larger inter-local agreement with the wraparound services that we're working towards. And I know the racer program has that crisis response as the upfront, which is the area that we may be currently not having the funding to, to potentially move towards. And part of that also is that soft landing place. They're actually building towards a location to take people in two in the morning. So, I think this, we're all moving in the same direction and I feel like the next progression is for council to have that hard budget talk about, do we then figure out if joining that ILA can be that next step so that that spot that we're kind of lacking right now and then potentially we can lend our expertise in the wraparound care to that same conversation? So, I think there is a bigger conversation that we all are excited about having and I, I think the conversations that we're currently engaged in are just really helpful and giving us all that, that broader picture. The one other question that I do have on the co-response model as it currently stands is, do the mental health professionals and the police currently ride together or is that in separate vehicles?
We currently ride together. So, MHP Kroll and the current MHP office sits at the station and it's not a dedicated cadre of officers. It's all just patrol officers who are all crisis intervention trained and who may be available that day, that evening, that, that night to take Susie with them to any call for service really, where she would feel that she could contribute in some capacity or she had previous contact with, with that individual.
Okay. And so, the, the new person that will be coming in would also be co-located, co-responsing with a police officer?
My understanding is yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. That is all I have for now. I saw, I know councilmember Fields has had his hand up and then councilmember Anderson.
So, are you saying, councilmember Fields?
I did.
Thanks. Um, so I know analogies are terrible and I always warn all of my colleagues, you know, analogies are dangerous, but I realized something during this discussion. It was the word follow-up that was kind of throwing me off. And the analogy I want to use is on a touchdown play by a football team, you know, who's the most important player? And it turns out that it's the person advancing the ball. It's the quarterback when he's getting ready to throw. It's the receiver when he catches it. It's the people who run interference and block for him and give him that space to cross the touchdown. What occurs to me is that this program is very similar to that. It's not about a follow-up or, you know, where, where the most important piece lies. This is all about information gathering. This first response is information gathering. You're not following up. You're transferring that information to the next level of expertise who are then going to move the ball, so to speak, and help start solving specific and very critical problems for members of our community. So, when I think of it like that, I find myself in support of your request. I do think as many councilmembers and, and even staff have said, there is, and Chief Shepherd said two or three times, you know, we're, it's not perfect, we're not done, we're evolving. And I think that that's right. So, I, I am in support of this. I do think that we need to continue to keep, look at that future need and those future partnerships, which I think that you've expressed, that you, you would do that. And then, so that's it for now. One last thing though, Mayor Bernie brought up 2015 and it reminded me of something that I think is really important here. And when I was first entering into politics in 2015, I ran for office and I met a person in the community, something I didn't know. And what she said was that heroin was the worst problem in Redmond. And she said, these nine, 10-year-olds that you're watching, watch 16 and 17-year-olds shoot up every day. I brought that message back to a political meeting and I was chastised for being an alarmist, for trying to embarrass public officials. And all I was doing was presenting a story from a member of our community. You all, in your lead role in responders, have a very unique opportunity to see and see before the rest of us the changes in our community. When you went out and saw a prescription drug vial in somebody's hand who just died from oxycontin, that, that's, that's a piece of information. So, as, and I know this doesn't go towards solving this particular request tonight, but I think a big part of what can be beneficial is as you're having these very lead discussions and interactions with the community and as was mentioned earlier, that, you know, people who were 65 are now 75 and they're still struggling with affordability, those are really important points of information for us. In the same way that in 2015, if we would have not had our head in the sand so far on opioid, the growing addiction problem, we may not have as many homeless people today. So, I appreciate you. I support your request and I think I'm, I've said enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. And like many of my fellow councilmembers, I do not need to be persuaded on this item. I'll just state that upfront, but I do have a lot of questions on how it will be implemented. Mr. Whitney, one of the questions I had for you, it sounded like you're thinking about contract work. Would this be continuing contracts or is it more like one-time money for building up infrastructure that we need to support this program?
That's a great question. It depends on, thank you. It's a great question. It depends on the, the particular nature of the contract. So, as an example, when we started Mih, we had contracts with Seattle Aging Disabilities. And it was a great contract for us. It was subject matter expertise we did not have, but after, after working with that agency for a period of a year and a half, two years, it, it provided our work group that subject matter expertise on how to access resources. So, that's an example of a contract. We, we used it as an opportunity, certainly to provide for the community, but also as an opportunity for education for our people. A contract like, if, if we were to get into contract with, with racer as an example, or agencies that were doing racer, that would be something that would be long-lasting as long as it was a successful program for us.
Great. I think the other clarification and a few councilmembers have suggested that we may be hearing about this program again, but I wanted to be clear if council will have input on this program beyond this meeting, yes or no?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, I, I'll reflect a little bit on some, a totally different topic, but one of the things that, that we've been talking about recently is an opportunity to share more with council, some of the things that are happening. I think there's value in that, whether it's actionable or non-actionable is another question, but that's something that, that we, Chief Shepherd and myself and our staff have discussed and being better at doing is just for awareness purposes of what is happening and in the world of fire suppression and EMS and community health.
Thanks. I appreciate that and I think we all will appreciate the top, the opportunity to tell you how well you're doing again. So, and then I just wanted to summarize what I've heard, just, there's a need for funds for contracts mostly to upscale infrastructure in three, and ask for additional FTE in, across three departments to basically double the size of the program. I have some questions about, when we come back to this, what will be the launch date of this new infrastructure that we're, we're envisioning in timeline to get to the scale? And then maybe the more important question is going to be what the maximum capacity of that infrastructure and people will be? If we know the need exists, what are we able to absorb here with that growth? And then one other, just general question was if this is going to look like a budget adjustment in 2023?
Just quickly to the growth. I think that one thing that's happening that we're recognizing is that there's, there's more awareness throughout the community of what Thrive is with, within the city of Redmond and, and the benefits that that offers. We, one of the, one of the aspects of this ask as well is, is to have a better data collection process. We have Gelato, which works great for us. There's different platforms for, that different agencies are using. The, the intent is not only to be housed together, co-located, but to have a, a data platform that allows everybody to have access to all the different clients and have awareness. It'll also help us guide care so we know that, that clients that Tisa's working with and Liz is working with are not necessarily independent of one another. We start putting that, those, that puzzle together. That data platform will certainly help us, but I think what's important to recognize is we are seeing growth. We, we, we recognize it's growth and it's, it, some of it's growth because of demand that's happening, it's increased demand, but some of it is also growth because of recognition of, and awareness with throughout the community that this is an available resource to us. So, I do believe this is the future of the fire service. The concepts of community health is the future of the fire service for all the reasons I talked about. And it's not just about mental health. Mental health is definitely an issue today and it will continue to grow and be an issue, especially as we see changes in Redmond with rail, et cetera. But an aging population is not going away. An aging population is going to have crippling effects on the clinical environment. We already see it. How many people have a hard time getting into their doctor's appointments or scheduled doctor's appointments? There is an epic failure in the medical system that is looming and the only way that it's going to be repaired is if, if public safety takes up some of that burden in ways that we can support people at home. And this will be on the backs of what a community health, this is the transition of when the fire service transitioned to an EMS agency and started providing basic life support and advanced life support care in the, in the seventies. We're experiencing a transition right now. It'll last over the next 10 years, but it will totally shift what the fire service looks like and it'll be in this vein of the work that you're, you're putting together now and, and as a team we're putting together now. It will be the future of the fire service. Not to say fires are going away and law, it'll be the, the, it will be the, the demands on public safety, honestly. And not to say that, that the work that the fire service does and law enforcement does now is going to go away. That will still exist, but we're going to have to take up this burden because it is real and it is here and it's not going away. That population will continue to grow that has needs in all, in all aspects and so.
Thank you. I wanted to address that sense of urgency and with repeating the amount, the, when, when this comes back to help us understand what the timeline to get to that scale will be that is within this proposal and then with the capacity that we can expect that infrastructure to, to bring us for that dollars, the dollars that we will be investing in the program. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, we've had a great conversation. I appreciate everyone very much. I want to bring us back to the recommendation at hand and I heard a lot of support for the current recommendation and I just want to check in with, I know councilmember Anderson and councilmember Fields showed their support. I just wanted to check in that we're all on the same page and showing support for the recommendation. Vice President Kritzer?
I really appreciate all the thought that's gone into this and I love that also we've
we've come out with this beautiful document of a mission, vision, and values for the Thrive program. I think, for me, I do still have a little bit of the concern, because I think we did spend a lot of time, and also part of what we have currently in our budget, and this would kind of shift it, we had dedicated that focus to do that initial crisis response, and I do hear you all, but I guess one of my questions before, I would feel comfortable moving forward and making sure you all have the resources, if you could hire people tomorrow to do these couple of things, then like, let's get to it, because I do think the other piece is, we want to be able to develop out this whole program and have our community come with us on it. But I'm wondering if we could actually build out a plan that includes the timeline, and for example, through our next budget process, what it would look like to really have that community responder program funded? Because I am reticent to be able to take that money away from that purpose until we know how we're going to be moving towards that, just to be totally honest. I think the other thought that I have is, before I would want to vote on this, I think it would be great for us to just be able to convene at least one work group with the community members that have reached out to us on this, and impacted community members, to be able to get their input on this. Because I do think, as I said before, I think there's like, what I'm hearing from a lot of people, what they want in terms of outcomes in this plan, and that maybe it's just even the way that these positions get structured, there may be things we haven't thought about that our community might be able to share. As Mayor Bernie mentioned, you know, part of how Tez's position came up was through a process of a task force, and I don't want a task force to like slow down people getting more access to services, but at the same time, I also don't want us to rush ahead without engaging with folks that are really interested in our community, and kind of being a part of this, and thinking about a creative solution. And I think if we give them the opportunity to think about it as we are, they'll be great participants in that. So, I guess my ask would be, before we actually get this final recommendation, would be to at least convene a working group meeting with community members on this. And then, I guess the second piece was around that longer plan.
Mayor Bernie? Your mic's not on?
Is it on?
No.
No.
How about now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I absolutely hear you. We have taken a lot of feedback from community. I would say that we have been working on this for quite some time. You know, we did have a levy that failed, that we were working on this. We have had our group working on this since before that time. We have been really trying to meet the needs of the community and answer the questions of the council, as well as other community members. But my worry is, bringing together a group will continue to delay this, and our goal is to get these jobs listed and opened and recruited, so that we can really start serving our community that really needs this, and our staff members that we do have now, who have really done a lot of thinking and data collection about what they really need in order to do their jobs better. So, that is my concern. My offer to you would be this, that we are obviously in a process of what we need right now and how we can grow this program, and so perhaps, and we would be doing this anyway, is to convene some opportunities for community feedback on how this program would be growing. At the same time that we bring forward the request for the FTEs and the money to go to these three positions that we've inquired, because I think, if I count council members, I do think that we have a majority council who's really ready to move forward on this particular request now. And I also have heard the feedback from the council that they would like to look into what the plan would be moving into the future, and how, not just what it would look like, but how we would fund it as well. And so, that could be work that we continue to do as we move forward to the next budget cycle. So, that's my offer to you, in order to meet the need that my staff has been asking for for some time.
Just say, thank you, Mayor Bernie, and I would be happy to talk with you and the chief, and any of the other folks involved in this offline, to think about some creative solutions on this that gets at what you're going for, that yes and, if possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
I like the mayor's offer.
Did you say you like the mayor's offer, is that what you said?
Correct.
Thank you. Yeah, that is exactly what I was going to propose, was that we continue moving forward with this, but also build into a checkpoint where we know what the plan is going forward, and I'm not talking the next budget cycle, but maybe even next year, so that we have that checkpoint early in the process, so that we know that everybody's concerns are heard and everybody's on the same page. So, I am good with that approach as well. Councilmember Stewart, I think if you have anything left to say, now is the moment. Not to put you on the spot, sorry. But otherwise, I just want to say thank you to everyone for this amazing conversation. I know we went a lot longer than we had planned, but I really, really think that this time together has been incredibly valuable, and I just want to say how much I appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we are moving on to council talk time, which is our last item on the agenda. Does anyone have anything for council talk time? Seeing nothing. I will follow up on the email that Councilmember Fields had mentioned during Ombud's report, and say that it actually was received via all council members, via the mayor council inbox, and that process was followed, Councilmember Fields followed that process appropriately, which was to send to Cheryl and Jason, and then that was forwarded out. The email that was received during the public records request was on a separate email thread, but the process by Councilmember Fields was followed appropriately. So, just wanted to follow up on that item. And I have nothing else for council talk time, it's been a long night, so I will wrap it up there, if anyone else has anything. Seeing none, thank you all so much for toughening it out, and we are adjourned.